All right, uh, welcome, everybody. Uh, let's get started. Today is Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 at 7:09 PM. Lanier, can you call the board, please?
Sure. Kim?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Spurlock?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Ross Striden?
Yes.
Kurt Johnson?
Yes.
Meeting calls are ordered, 7:10 PM.
Thank you. Okay, our first item is a public hearing on the 2024 tax lift. I don't think we have any comments on it.
We need to leave the motion to go into the public hearing.
Oh.
And then lose the motion to class.
Thank you.
I move the Board of Education, Oak Park, District 97, move into open session on the public hearing on the district's 2024 tax lift.
Second. Kurt Johnson?
Yes.
Ross Striden?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Spurlock?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Motion to open him. We have no public comment for the record, so some of the big emotions.
I move the Board of Education, Oak Park, D97, close the public hearing on the district's 2024 tax lift.
Okay, um, that takes us to public comment. Um, thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. We appreciate your engagement, uh, and value your comments. As I think folks probably know, while we welcome your comments, we generally don't respond to them during public comment, however, we do give them serious consideration. Uh, if you wish to speak, hopefully, you've signed in already. When your name is called, please step up to the podium, state your name for the record. Because we have a number of people signed up tonight, we're gonna actually, um, give folks three minutes each. If you're still speaking when you reach three minutes, please finish your thought and conclude. We request that speakers conduct themselves with respect and civility toward, towards others. And if you have a written copy of your testimony, please provide it to Lanier when you're done, so she can include it in the minutes for the meeting. And first up, we have David Wells.
Hi, uh, hello, everybody. Well, how's your month been? Good to see you. So, uh, we, out of the permanent substitutes, um, have read with interest the attached agenda item that's 9.1 on the docket, um, which is regarding a pay increase for non-union personnel with specific, specificity to, uh, permanent substitutes. Um, and we also, including the explanatory memo that's scheduled to be voted on tonight. Uh, I would like to thank you for following through with the rates that you put forward at the November board meeting. As we have mentioned in many previous communications, it's a step towards equity that is long overdue, so we are glad to finally see concrete action being taken. Therefore, the main reason I'm here is to encourage and urge the board to approve the basic pay rate increases that have been put forth by HR. They're long, 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 long overdue. Um, however, thinking about it further, there are four more points that I feel need to be raised. Um, point number one, we again ask that the proposed pay raises be made retroactive to the beginning of the school year in late August. Uh, to refresh everybody's memory, Human Resources Spurlock first put forth a pay rate equity proposal to the board back in June. As we have mentioned in the past, many of us made long-term plans at the beginning of the school year only to find that the rate was rescinded and have faced significant hardship as a result. We were encouraged when the HR team included this in their presentation at last Oc- at October's, no, sorry, November's board meeting, but it doesn't seem to be included in the memo for tonight's postponed. Um, are we to assume that the retroactive pay is simply a given? And if not, I hope that that measure can be amended to include that. Um, two, we noted with interest the statement that the new pay rate is 91% of the median level of sampled schools. Uh, since I'm sometimes called upon to teach middle school math, I would like to remind everyone that 90%, 91% of a median value does not place us in the top 90% of schools. As we should all know, the median is the exact median value, so 91% is a polite way of saying that the proposed rates are slightly below average. I've been wondering, would our district probably set a goal of being slightly below average in any other category? I'll let you answer that to yourself. As the saying goes, this is point number three, this meeting could have been an email. Or at the very least, the dozens of our largely unanswered emails from May onward, and the many times that I and others have come forward before you for public comment, could have easily been a simple meeting, face-to-face. The process could have been a lot simpler. And I, for a district that values openness and communication in all of their stated, um, releases, um, we need to actually be able to sit down and discuss instead of us just saying something that we have no idea where it lands. And then number four, and the final point, it's also important to realize that this measure is a first step. And, sorry, I did prepare for five minutes, I could just, like, three more sentences. And are also still behind in other ways, especially in terms of year-to-year job security and only three days' worth of sick leave. Um, meanwhile, back at Julian, we are getting two emails per day requesting substitutes. Um, back in early September, Board Member Spurlock urged that the district take a multifaceted approach to equity, suggesting that a quick and easy proposal for pay equity be brought forward for a vote, but also to continue seeking solutions to make the proposition more equitable overall. Board Member Kim stated a willingness to think creatively about solutions and the whole argument.
You're over your three seconds.
I, 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 I understand. Um, but all, many of us have prepared five minutes, and this is something that really isn't.
But we have a lot of people who want to speak tonight. Thank you. Uh, next up is Emile Muto, Muto. Apologies if I just got your name wrong.
My name's Emma Muto. I'm a Lincoln parent. Sorry, I'll prepare five minutes, I'll try to keep it, um, short, but I really wanted to take my time, both the knowledge and shout out to some of the wonderful teachers we've had at Lincoln, and also bring up a bit of some concerns about how acceleration is being, um, maybe being handled with a middle school math change. Um, we feel truly blessed by teachers my son has had so far at Lincoln. They have built classroom communities that feel like family. They instill a love of learning. They very quickly get to know their class to see how to best support individual needs and have gone above and beyond to differentiate instruction for my son to offer more challenging curriculum when needed. Um, and I could give many examples for each of them, kind of pick and choose now. When my son started kindergarten, our biggest concern were the social aspects of school and a concern that he could get potentially bored with academics. Um, Ms. Clark gave us frequent updates. She quickly realized he was a fluent reader, helped give him chapter books, additional challenging material, and had a full detailed plan by conferences of how she was gonna help him differentiate instruction for him. Um, same thing in first grade, when Ms. Barker, her and another first-grade teacher worked together to, um, pair him and another high-level reader in a third class together to have their own little reading group. And again, this is going above and beyond what is being asked of them. It's really, um, reaching them at the level that he needs. Um, and again, he started accelerating to Ms. Cortez's second-grade class for math in first grade. And, you know, we weren't sure, even though he was ready, how he'd be accepted by his older peers, but Ms. Cortez had set a wonderful, um, environment where they welcomed him right away, really made him feel included as part of the classroom. Um, and having this acceleration opportunity was really critical, because even with the classroom differentiation, we knew that he needed to be stretched further. Um, again, with Mrs. Wheatley in second grade, he, she set a wonderful community, wonderful projects. And again, every time I get to conferences, she, they've already set out, like, I see what he needs, we've talked through it, there's a plan for how they're gonna meet him where he is. And I say this because, you know, full-year acceleration has been brought up to us, but we really feel like it's important for him to be with his peers, with his age group, um, for social, emotional reasons and, um, and for growth. And, because just because a kid is advanced academically doesn't mean they're more mature than others and that they would excel in other aspects of being, um, in a higher grade. And so, I, when I come, to tie that a little bit to the math part, when it comes down to the math, in particular, in terms of math, when he's in fourth grade, he'll learn math class at fifth graders, and many of these students will hopefully pursue this new, well, not new, but access to algebra and bridge to middle school, but he's currently would be excluded from it. So even if he's the top math student in his class, he is not allowed to take the same opportunities, um, to kind of further accelerate, accelerate into the middle school math program. He's not, um, he's not eligible for it, so he would really be separated from his math cohort that he's been with since his first grade. So I would hope that the math, a large part of his math class would pursue that extra, kind of, um, called acceleration, what you quote, or term it. And so, I don't know if the purpose for excluding accelerated students for the bridge to math is because you feel like they already are gonna get there anyway, because they already get to algebra, but I think this is missing the needs. Thank you. Um, to disregarding the needs for these students and meeting every student where they're at. And so, I would, really, my ask is for you to look at bringing back the advanced math courses to the middle schools and also seeing how advanced students' needs are being met, um, through this transition.
Thank you. Ty Brunson?
Thanks for noticing, Allison.
I apologize.
Um, I would like to talk about the 10th-grade math acceleration or the lack thereof. I've noted that in past years, there have been, uh, programs allowing middle schoolers to accelerate to the 10th grade in mathematics. And I've known that now, of course, it has been restricted. And I really don't know why. I personally, this year, this fall, tried extra hard on, like, the math testing, on the math testing, so that I could accelerate another grade and advance my education more. But it was kind of disappointing to go and realize that the district can't, refuses to, uh, show that and refuses to have a program for me to accelerate. And I really don't know why it's necessary. I just want to know why. And I think it would really help a lot of students in, like, college admissions and other things, to advance their careers and et cetera, to have, to go and say, I accelerated, I was able to progress. Look at me, I'm impressive. But to stop them from doing that is restricting them for no real reason. Okay, so, thank you. I just wanted that to be known. Thank you.
Emily Brynelson?
Hi. Hi, it's my kid. I'm proud of him. I told him, uh, he could do it, I could be, I could get over my nerves, and I could do it too. So, um, I'm coming and standing in support of my son. Um, he was accelerated in math, and I believe it was fourth grade, and, um, middle of COVID, and he has always, it was very hard to even get him accelerated a year. He has always scored within the 99th percentile since kindergarten on all of his math scores. Um, I, this year, he wanted to accelerate an additional grade. He's in ninth grade, um, math now. Um, and so he wanted to accelerate to 10th, and we had a friend who was going over to the high school and doing that. So I went and spoke with the district, even, uh, the person in charge of acceleration, that that had been eliminated, and it wasn't a possibility for him. Um, I think that you need to realize the impact this is having on our students. Um, because of his abilities in math, we are considering applying to the Illinois Math and Science Academy, which students can apply for in their eighth-grade year to go there in ninth grade or in 10th grade. It's a public school for highly gifted math and science students. It's residential. Um, however, the ninth-grade math, in order to even be considered, you have to have completed Algebra I. And the ninth-grade math that is offered through the district, through the district, does not have all the components of Algebra I. So our children, our eighth graders, are not allowed to apply to that school and are not even able to be considered. Um, whereas if he had been able to take 10th-grade math this year, he would have at least been able to be considered. So now we're gonna have to wait an extra year and apply in ninth grade. Oh, fortunately, they let you apply in ninth grade. Um, but you're restricting his opportunities, and I wanted the board to take that into consideration because, you know, it is a public school that we're looking into, IMSA is. And, um, we're denying our brightest kids those opportunities. Um, and I do realize, from all of what I've been told, is the decision has been made because, uh, there are under-repr- under-representation of certain racial minority groups in the gifted program, so we're kind of just getting rid of it. Um, because, for equity reasons. But I think this is inequitable one for the minority students who are in those programs. You're taking it away from them as well. And then it made me wonder what other programs are we gonna get rid of under the same basis? Like, my son is in and loves orchestra, but that orchestra is, has an overrepresentation of Caucasian and Asian students. So are we gonna think about getting rid of that for equity? Um, you know, I think we need to look at the big picture. We shouldn't penalize certain of our students. We should just try to find a way to make, uh, admission to these different programs more equitable as opposed to saying, we can't do it, so let, you know, get rid of the program. Um, so that's what I have to say. We need to stop harming our most gifted kids. And this, this elimination of, uh, the ability to take 10th-grade math has had clearly a very real harm for my child. All he wanted, he's like, all I wanted to do, I tried so hard on the math test just so I could go over to the high school. And, uh, what are we telling him? You know, you can work really, really hard, but we're still not gonna place you in the most appropriate place for you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jamie Wenchel?
Hello. Good evening. Uh, my name is Jamie Wenchel. And this is my 10th year as teacher librarian at Julian. I'm a proud OPTA member, and today was my 75th day working on an expired contract. I am dedicated to serving the students and families of the Oak Park community. I am making it known to the Board of Education that we, the Oak Park Teachers Association, need fair wage increases and working conditions that show respect to us as experts. Tomorrow, I will fulfill all of my job duties and more at Julian, which will be my 76th day working on an expired contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Brooks?
Just a good head start on the campaign. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Claire Brooks, a teacher at Julian, community member and OPTA member. Um, as many of you know, I normally have a lot to say, a lot of words. Um, and I love my numbers and my stats, but tonight, I'm kind of just at a loss of what to say, uh, which does not happen often or frequently. Um, so I'm not sure if there's anything to say beyond that we've been working under an expired contract for 75 days. Thank you.
Paul Packer?
Uh, good evening. My name is Paul Packer, and unlike Claire, I actually have more to say this evening. I'm a member of OPTA, and I have been a teacher in the district for 32 years, and I have been on the collective bargaining team three times. This is the first time in those 32 years that I've been asked to work under an expired contract, and I don't understand why. I, along with my colleagues, are tired, frustrated, and angry that we do not have a new contract. We have been working under this expired contract for 75 days. Adding insult to injury, we are continually being bombarded with demands by administration to prove our worth or that we are doing our jobs. If you have been listening since last spring to public comment, there should be no doubt that we are doing our jobs. Last April, the language arts specialists, MTSS coaches, instructional coaches, and enrichment specialist positions were attacked based on misinformation that there was minimal student contact time, without actually discussing what the positions entail with the people who do them. Then, two months ago, those that are nationally board certified were told, without any discussion or input, that they need evidence that they are doing their jobs and that their stipend is justified. And just last week, the teacher leaders, who, by the, by the way, applied for the job and then are interviewed and hired for their roles, were told that they need to provide evidence from the last few months that they have been doing their jobs. All of this occurring over email with cute subject lines or non-identifying signatures. Yes, we do share emails, and different groups within OPTA do talk to each other. All of this, while being told by administration that we want to collaborate. We want you to have a voice. And yet, none of these groups was approached before or after these decisions and demands were made. All the while, we go to work day in and day out, above and beyond, on an expired contract. 75 days. What group is next? I am hoping to have a nice holiday season despite this hanging over my heart and mine. I wish the same to you and yours. Thank you for your time this evening.
Claire Blackham?
Hi, um, I understand it's, uh, the board president's right to lower the minutes, but I prepared five minutes, and with Jamie Wenchel's permission, I'm gonna take two of hers, um, to add to this. So I'm gonna go fast.
Doesn't quite work that way, but if you could hustle it up, that would be great.
My name is Joel Blackham. I'm speaking as an OPTA member, uh, kindergarten teacher at Irving and D97 parent. I'm part of the 45% of the union who are Oak Park residents. This figure signals enormous commitment to our schools. Our love of and belief in our schools is such that we entrust our very own children to attend our collective halls of learning. However, that love is giving way to a deep frustration since, as we've heard, it's day 75 of working under an expired contract. With high inflation and rising Oak Park property taxes compounding the financial stresses of the holidays, we teachers need a new contract with a fair increase now. But I'd like to take this opportunity to shine a real positive spotlight on the work of one of my colleagues, Kiara Moody. She's the MTSS interventionist and codeee. Um, skip ahead here. She does so many amazing things, but let me just give you a glimpse of what, uh, it looks like in action, her job, and why it's so integral. On day one of the school year, Kiara was in my classroom, getting to know all the kindergarteners and reading her favorite books to the class so that they knew her well by the time she needed to work with them. That has really paid off. The kids run to her when she comes to pull them for intervention time. And the kids who don't even work with her welcome her arrival with, "Hey, Ms. Moody, I miss you, Ms. Moody," and lots of hugs. Kiara is energetic, positive, and always focused on students. And that translates to how much she supports me, my colleagues, and families. She's a thought partner for planning and helping find appropriate resources. Recently, I sought her help in supporting a kindergartner who couldn't identify and number names no matter what I was trying. She listened and provided me with resources and strategies by day end. Her partnering with families is inspirational. She's always seen me on families for, uh, from the kids in my class. The emails are incredibly detailed, full of data, goals, kudos, all written in a way that parents can digest. As a parent, I feel super impressed, super informed, and profoundly grateful that my kid is in her hands. That all extrapolates to how the kids she works with in, oh, let me back up. She attends every single parent-teacher conference of children that she works with. Extrapolate that to all grades, K to 5, and that's a ton of parent-teacher conferences. She's always sending home, uh, easy-use resources for parents to use. Working with this woman reminds me of how our work can be a joyous collaboration with parents for the benefit of kids. And she routinely goes above and beyond all that. This year, Kiara co-created and led our first family math night, huge hit. She also takes time at every beginning of the day and end of the day to serve as students' check-in, check-out coach, providing warm, warm words of encouragement for those kids who are struggling with meeting behavior expectations. She also supports the school leadership plan by working with our vocal cohort students in reading. Irving's vocal cohort, cohort students are our black students. As our Black Excellence Teaching in Oak Park representative, Kiara led our first Wellness Wednesday in November for all families of the vocal cohort. She's an integral part of Irving School, and I'm proud to work with her. Please give Kiara, give me, give the OPTA a fair contract. Thank you so much.
Judy Friesen?
So in September, I skipped up here and I blithely promised to become a better District 97 educator. I'd just seen this portrait of a D97 educator. And I was so excited, but also terrified of the things I wasn't doing. And I want a district-wide gratitude and respect to grow for me. Then came one of the most difficult assignments in 20 years that I've ever been given. I don't think I would have asked for it, but I'll tell you, my eyes have been open. This fall, well, okay, so I used to think selfishly that the music departments were like the best in the district. I'm sorry, but we just thought that. And now, I, I do have to say, I've spent every two to three weeks in a different school, different grade level, um, supporting gen ed teachers and TAs in quotot and blended classrooms where their special educator wasn't able to be present for a couple of weeks for, you know, various reasons. And my respect for my colleagues in this district has shot through the roof. There is no way that any of us could be in every room in every building every week and get an idea of what's going on. But from the sampling that I've had this fall, I will tell you what I think is going on in the quiet corners everywhere in this district. meticulous planning, patient and artful unfolding of the year. Wise and experienced educators honing their craft, day by day, year by year, not just plugging in A and B and hoping to get C, but educators working with little humans, very messy little humans, with magnificent days themselves and extremely frustrating days. Two steps forward, one step back. They need our patience, they need our encouragement, our boundaries, our inspiration, our safe place to grow and make mistakes and be themselves and be heard and challenged and loved. Some teachers are having the best year ever this year. Some are having their most challenging year ever, yet every single one of them shows up to meet our kiddos with grit, with determination, with smiles, and with loads and loads of excellence. So I'm gonna give a shout out to the people I've been with this fall. Shout out to the kindergartners in fifth grade at By School, Ms. Hannah McManay kindergarten, amazing, don't ever lose her. Ms. Karen Fogg, amazing. The TAs, Ms. Stokes, Ms. Jordan, Ms. Stanton. And then, I've just been at Whittier in early childhood. Oh, my gosh, you guys, this program over there. Ms. Molly Brennan, the TA, that, because I was in for Ms. Julia Friol. Ms. Valerie Lenzian, Ms. Sean Marocco, Ms. Jenny Ray, and Ms. Jordan DeSanto, and the effervescent Ms. Julia Espinoza, amazing. So, we ask for a good contract, because there are just some fantastic people out there, not tooting their horns, but they are getting it done, day in and day out, with many smiles and much love for all our kiddos. Thank you.
Erica Shannon?
Hello, my name is Erica Shannon, and I am a member of the D97 Oak Park Teachers Association. This school year marks my 25th year of teaching and my 23rd year here in D97. I currently teach the fourth and fifth grade orchestra classes at Hatch, Irving, Lincoln, and Mann Elementary Schools. Prior to 2014, I taught the orchestras at Holmes Elementary School. I also taught the sixth grade general music for 12 years at Percy Julian Middle School. When I joined the D97 teaching faculty in the fall of 2002, I couldn't believe my good fortune. I had spent the two previous years in the neighboring school district, traveling from classroom to classroom, teaching general music on a cart stocked only with a set of music books and a CD player with zero budget to purchase instruments and other resources. Once in Oak Park, I was elated to have my own dedicated general music classroom space and was, that was fully stocked with instruments, a good sound system, and other materials, plus a yearly budget at my disposal. I was also so happy to teach orchestra in a district where instrumental music classes happen as part of the curricular school day, thus ensuring that every child who wants to learn to play an instrument can do so without lack of financial resources or time outside of the school day standing in their way. What's more, I soon became aware that the public education in the arts was very much appreciated and strongly supported by Oak Park's families as well as D97 administration at the time. It truly felt to me like teaching a dream, and I was so happy to become part of the ensemble with so many top-notch educators. My connection to Oak Park is also very personal. Very truly, District 97 brought my family into being. I met my husband, now-retired D97 instrumental music educator, Brian Shannon, when we shared an office and commonly planned time at Percy Julian Middle School. Our two sons, now 17 and 19, are proud products of the fine education they received, respectively, at Whittier and Hatch Elementarys, then later at Brooks Middle School. Now, 23 years after coming to teach in D97, I can still honestly say that I love my job. I love watching them wonder in my students' eyes when they open their cases and hold their instruments in their hands for the first time. I love seeing the excitement on their faces when they learn to make their first musical sounds. I love seeing their senses of accomplishment and confidence grow with each new playing skill they master. To myself and to many of my colleagues here in D97, teaching generations of children is not just a job where one clocks in and clocks out. Teaching for us is a calling and a passion. We count ourselves incredibly lucky to be doing the work that we love and work that is incredibly important. We are shaping and learning the lives of the children we teach, and we do it with compassion and kindness. The academic and life skills our students learn in our classrooms accompany them their entire lives. The Oak Park Teachers Association is an outstanding group of professionals. We are the boots-on-the-ground, expertly delivering well-rounded education and our social, social, emotional, and, and support to our students every single day. We are masters in our fields. We deserve to be recognized. We deserve to be recognized, respected, and treated as such by administration. The fact that we have just completed Day Seventy-Five of teaching under an expired contract, it's not only mind-boggling, but frankly, it feels very disrespectful. Here's another fact. It has been six years since members of the OPTA last signed a new contract. It is time, way past time, I'm almost done, for a new contract, one that ensures safe working conditions for all teachers, one that demonstrates that teachers are respected and supported by administration, and one that rewards our collective talent and loyalty as hard workers with fair and equitable salaries. We deserve a good contract. We need it now. Let's get it done.
Kate O'Keefe?
Hi. I'm not wearing my red, but I'm District 97 teacher. My name is Kate O'Keefe. I've been an educator for over twenty years, and this is my ninth year teaching in District 97. And my seventh day of teaching without a contract. I'm also a D-97 parent. My kids went to Holmes, Brooks, I got one at high school now. I'm here to talk to you about leadership at my school. As you know, we have a new principal, Nick Filpowsky, as well as two new assistant principals, Adrian Porter and Juana. These three people have been working tirelessly to repair our learning environment and establish a more structured, positive, and restorative climate in our school. I am so grateful for each of them and for their dedication to our school and our students. In fact, I have more faith in them than I've had in any of the administrators I've had in all my years at Julian, and there have been a lot of them. I worry, though, that these three shining stars will burn out. Not only are they each completely new to their roles, but two are new to the school. There was no one there to show them the ropes, and they walked into a building that was really kind of on fire at the end of last year. They worked so hard, but they spent so much time dealing with student behavior and restorative work, which takes more time than just giving a simple consequence. And they don't have time to do many of the things they want to do desperately, like be in our classrooms, be at our COI meetings, be at our team leader meetings, mentor new teachers, et cetera. Together, I feel like we've come so far but have the potential to do so much better. We need more support. We need a third assistant principal like we used to have before the restructuring. As you probably know, prior to 2022, each school had one principal and three assistant principals. I'm talking just middle schools. Each assistant principal was responsible for one of the grades, and therefore a combination of curriculum, discipline, teacher evaluation, and other school-wide responsibilities. With the restructuring, the number of assistant principals at both middle schools was reduced from three to two. One responsible for culture and climate, the other for curriculum, teaching, and learning. In the process, we lost several talented, committed leaders during this restructuring due to the fact that they had to reapply for their jobs and wait through the summer to find out which role they would get. A new division of responsibilities has made these jobs very difficult to fill. Very few APs want a job that is one-hundred-percent student disciplined with no ability to impact curriculum, teaching, and learning. For one, it is a thankless, tiring job. Also, a number of years in this role would deprive you of the opportunity to develop many of the skills that a building principal would need, and that's the role that most APs are preparing for. From what I understand at Julian, both Adrian and Juana signed on believing their job would be a curriculum job. In the end, they made a compromise, so they are both doing both curriculum and discipline. At Brooks, where my son is attending for the past three years and my daughter attended for two years, the AP of Culture and Climate position is still vacant four months into the school year. So I asked the board and you, Dr. Shaw, to please return to our previous model of three APs, one principal, and to please post these positions early enough that the new leaders can be hired at the end of the school year and have the summer to be trained by our current leadership teams, who we hope and pray will stay with us and sign on for another year. Thank you.
Elizabeth Wiedzen?
Wiedzen.
Wiedzen?
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Wiedzen, and I am speaking as an OPTA member. I teach second grade at Holmes. And as I wrapped up report cards over the weekend, I couldn't be more proud of the students in Tubi for their effort, willingness to take risks, and the growth they have shown both academically and socially during trimester one. It seems that many people assume teachers don't work outside of their contracted hours. However, I typically spend about four hours beyond the school day each day, an additional six hours on average over the weekend working. Now, I know some people think I'm a little hardcore, but I feel like I need to put that in in order to do my job well. Even with twenty-five years of experience as being a full-time nationally board certified teacher and the recipient of the 2023 Those Who Excel Award, each year truly feels like I'm starting a new job. Teachers must adapt their instruction in classroom to meet the unique needs of each new group of students. A lesson that works for one group of students may not be effective for another. Every year, I have students that have different accommodations, which I prepare for on my own time. In addition to these above responsibilities that come with being an effective teacher, other times I spend, I'll time the school, are sending and responding to family emails, writing my weekly newsletter, unit planning to meet all of the learners with best practices, reflecting on my own teaching practices, adjusting my instruction, trying to make teaching fun and engage all, mentoring early career educators, and constantly changing members of my team. I also have to give a shout out to Oak Park Freebox and Free to a Good Home because I run around all weekend long, I see your name, picking up free things for my classroom. We just had a PBIS reward and Handcraft Day, all thankful to all of the Oak Park community who donated wonderful things. And we did origami, and we did sticker by number, and we did the glue where you put the glitter on top, and we made all these designs, and all the things were donated. But I went around and picked them all up all weekend long. Since I have been in BMD since 2018, I have not been receiving any pay increases to my base salary, besides the cost of living increase that every employee receives, which does not cover our annual consumer price index. I am dedicated to serving the students and families of Oak Park community, and I have been working under an expired contract for seventy-five days. I love my job, and I love my students. I am making it known to the Board of Education that we, the Oak Park Teachers Association, sorry, need fair increases in working conditions to show respect for us as experts. Thank you.
Damian Tate?
Hello.
Welcome.
I'm sorry, I was thinking, I'm sorry. I respect you. Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for allowing me to, the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Damian Tate. I am here to express my deep concern and frustration regarding the treatment my children have faced within this district. As a parent, it is incredibly difficult to stand before you today, but I feel it is necessary to address the unacceptable experiences my children has had at your school. Recently, my son was called a racial slur, a word that has historically been used to degrade, dehumanize Black people. The pain that comes with this, come with hearing that word is immeasurable. It was not just an insult, it was an attack on his identity, his dignity, and his humanity. What's even more troubling is that after I reported this incident to the school, I received no direct follow-up. What happened, school did not reach out to me, and I had to take it upon myself to come into the school and make sure that this issue was addressed. To make matters worse, my other son has been subjected to harassment. He's also has been called a homophobic slur, another word that carries with the deep pain, shame, and discrimination. This resulted in him being jumped last year, arm broken, emotionally distressed, all happening at the middle school with no supervision. This kind of bullying should never be tolerated, especially in a school environment, but it has been allowed to happen. Just like my other son, there has been no significant action from the administration to ensure that these slurs and acts of bullying stop. Nothing but forced apologies from the students. What frustrates me even more is that my children are not only suffering the harm of these words, they are also feeling unsupported by the very people who are supposed to protect them. I have yet to see real meaningful consequences for the students when we are engaging in this kind of behavior. It is clear to me that these issues are being downplayed, dismissed, or worse, ignored. As a parent, I should not have to fight to ensure that my children are safe at school. I should not have to worry that my children will be targeted because of their race, their identity, and who they are. It is heartbreaking to see that my sons are being subjected to such cruelty in a place that is supposed to be a safe and supportive environment for all students. My house is full of disarray because of this. In addition, I witnessed the educators being targeted by the administration at Whittier for similar reasons involving unequal treatment. I'm here to ask this board, this district, to take these matters seriously. Racism, homophobia, and all forms of discrimination have no place in our schools. These kinds of slurs are not just words, they are harmful, they are damaging, they perpetuate a culture of hate that we should not be working to eliminate. We should be working to eliminate and not condone. My children deserve to go to school without fear of being targeted for who they are. I should not have to send my children to school every day wondering whether they'll come home feeling ashamed or unsafe. I am asking for more than just apologies. I'm asking for action, real consequences for those who engage in bullying, education for all students on the harmful impact of these slurs, and the commitment from this administration to stand up against racism, homophobia, and to protect all students from discrimination. The administration of Whittier especially has done nothing in multiple scenarios that swept it under the world, the words saying statements which I quote, "At the young age they are, they are not considered anything even more than a call." I hope that this board will take a long, hard look at how these issues are being handled and that we can move forward with a renewed commitment to create a truly safe, inclusive, and supportive environment for every child in this district. Thank you for your time.
Candace Nix?
I'm actually gonna follow up with what he said because our boys are in the same class at the same school. My name is Candace Nix. My son is in second grade at Whittier Elementary. As he mentioned, there was an incident where some white students were saying the N-word, and my son and his son asked him to stop, and they did not. They said, and I quote, "We can't stop saying it, it's in our heads." My son did not tell me about this incident until seven p.m. that night. So I didn't know about it, but he felt that it was bad enough, it made him feel bad enough, and he needed to come tell me. So I immediately called the parent of one of the boys. That conversation wasn't as fruitful as I liked. I felt she was inequipped to talk to her son about next steps. And I also immediately alerted the school as well as the teacher, I mean, the teacher as well as the principal. My biggest thing, I think he eloquently summed up that no racist language, no offensive language should be tolerated, and there should be immediate action taken. So my ask, and I've asked this several times, is a few things. But before I get there, I do wanna say, I asked this principal to send out a correspondence immediately regarding what had happened because I felt that the community of Whittier needed to know what was going on. I got a little bit of pushback, but something was sent out, and it was very generic. There was racial, what I think was said was there was racial language being used amongst students. That's not true. The racist language was used toward students, and it was not stopped when asked. And I think the biggest thing is that there was no contention when I had this conversation with the principal and the administration, and I don't want there to be contention, but I do want the next steps that I'm about to say to somehow come magically appear at some point. I do have a group of people here as well who are not only here to support me, but to discuss the experiences as well as the education needed for something better to be done. It's kind of interesting because I attended Whittier way back then, and these situations were even worse. Oak Park helps itself as this diverse community, and I don't think that's seen a lot in the way we handle situations within our school. A couple of things I wanna throw out there that I think may be helpful, but I do wanna see because I won't stop talking about it, is we need to have equity education for our students. So there's no age limit on when this should happen. If a child is five and they have heard that word, if a child is three and they've heard that word, then they're old enough to understand the implications of it, and there's curriculum and teachings out there that are appropriate for those students to learn. Additionally, I want to provide a safe environment for all students, but particularly our Black and Brown students, and very particularly our Black students, because what we've seen is that sometimes these situations are swept under the rug and kind of pushed like, this was an incident that happened, and we can move forward from it, but essentially now his child, my child, our children don't feel safe. And then I get involved, and now I'm also feeling unsafe because nothing is being done. Additional to children needing that education, and this could be done yearly or every trimester, our educators need updated anti-racism training. So maybe they don't feel equipped in how to talk about this with students. Maybe it's the first time that they've come across it, and they don't know what to say. I know I heard the time, I'll be really quick. Maybe they don't know what to say, which is understandable, I'll give that. But this is upon all of us, especially the board who runs the district, to ensure that all of your teachers are equipped. They don't have a contract, but they also don't have the equipment to push forward initiatives to make sure students are not bullying each other, make sure students are not saying racist language. And I wanna put this out there, if you all have students or children, would you want your child coming home and telling you, "Hey, Mom, Dad, somebody said the N-word to me. Somebody said a racial slur about me being whatever," and the school really didn't do anything about it? We talked about it once, and that was it. How would you feel as a parent and maybe take that in consideration when you're thinking through this? Because I'll be back, and I'll continue to send my emails and continue to try to talk to you all, and I want us to be in Congress, but I want us to do it in a way that is collaborative. So I'm not here to yell and scream and fight with you, but I am here to say this won't be the last time you'll hear from me, and this won't be the last time that I'm bringing this up. So I'm gonna stop there, I'm getting a little...
The biggest problem I've really had with this is that my son was made to apologize. I'm very confused, as though like he did something wrong for reporting it, for letting that child know what he said was inappropriate and wrong. And somehow, at the end of this, him being called the word, he ended up apologizing. That to me was way more unacceptable than I could ever believe. Should've been in that situation. And then giving to me no explanation to, basically it was a sweep under the rug, and I've been waiting for weeks and a half for a response, while I'm still waiting. That's unacceptable. I'm sorry.
Jane Zimmer?
Hi, I'm Jane. I'm back. Candace is my friend. This is not the first time I'm here to support another friend to talk about the same issue about equity and racism in our schools, particularly to our Black students. I could go on and on about my son's experience at Whittier. He's in second grade with these two families as well. In kindergarten, he had a teacher who was super racist. School's super well-aware of that, we've talked about that a million times. In first grade, he was taunted for being chocolate and gross while other white kids were vanilla, that's right, are vanilla. They had restorative justice meetings, no call was made to the parents. My son told me, not at seven o'clock, but at eight-thirty when it was bedtime because that is the best time to bring up conversations. And I'm the one who notified some other parents and brought them to the school to say, "Hey, when there's racism, are you all gonna call us or no?" And it seems like, even though I brought that up, that still is the case, that when racist actions happen, we isolate the incident, act as though that doesn't happen, and we have no policy, it seems, to... and we have no policy, it seems, to actually address it in a meaningful way. Why is that? Why is there no policy on this? And I've been in meetings here where we talked about the inequity amongst students and I don't know how many people are aware of this. Um, really the numbers. I pulled the numbers off of the Illinois Report Card. Between 2019 and 2024, white learners in 2019 met and exceeded standard at 50.6%. In 2024, I'm sorry, in 2019, in 2024, that number jumped to 65.6% of white learners meeting and exceeding standards. In 2019, Black learners, only 16.6% met and exceeded standards. And in 2024, we're seeing 26.1% of your Black learners meeting and exceeding standards. Currently, in 2024, Black learners, 74% of them did not meet, partially met, or approached Illinois state standards. So do you think there's something correlated with the inequities that we're seeing in our education with the racism that we, our students see in schools? If we don't deal with the racism that our students experience structurally as well as casually, how do we expect these numbers to change in our community? How? I will not be so blasé to say I've done research. I've done a lot of Googling. Just to be clear, really good at the Google machine. But I came across a really great study and there are some things that I, there are two quotes that I just wanna end with. "Schools can violate the psychological safety of Black students when there is a failure or refusal to explicitly discuss racism with students, potentially re-traumatizing them." So in my son's life, at his, it's seven years old, just to be clear, my son's Black. Um, anyways, um, just to clarify, he doesn't see the school stepping off when there's racism happening. So what are we telling, what am I telling my Black son? "Yeah, you're just gonna have to deal with it. That's okay because we know it happens." Because he's not seeing that change. He's not seeing it. When I told him that the parents are doing something, he's like, "Thank you, Mama." Because the kids are all talking about it and the way they're talking about it is completely uneducated. It's completely seven-year-old and stupid and silly. The last quote I will say, because I heard the timer. "One can argue that the constant debate regarding the Black-white opportunity gap in achievement can be considered a microaggression because it is typically assumed that the low academic performance for Black students is due to internal attributes or their parents' characteristics." I really hope that is not true in the core beliefs of who we are as individuals in this community, leaders in this community at this board, and the educators here. But that is what our experience is. We are here as community members to say that we know that this is not a fight that we can abolish. We get that. But we are here to do that work. But I've asked that many times and I've been here a few times and there has been nothing. And what's at stake is our kids and we're saying that's just okay because we're not taking action. Thank you.
Erica Cates?
Yeah. Okay. I love Whittier. Uh, I love the second grade community. And as a part of the community, I must stand up when Black students are called the N-word. And I am not here alone. I speak for several of the women sitting behind me and more that are on and watching. This is not okay. I'm a psychotherapist and I specialize in trauma. And when our children are in fight-flight-or-freeze mode, which is what happens when they are exposed to something like the N-word or called the N-word, they cannot learn. We wonder about the difference between the Black and white learners. If our students don't feel safe, those numbers will not get better. My concrete ask for both an immediate and longer-term school-wide intervention is the following. I ask that this incident of racism be used as a teachable moment for every student in the building so that in the event this happens again, we can point to the moment they were educated on this and why it is not okay. Specifically, within the next few weeks, every student is alerted with a school-wide assembly, a grade-by-grade discussion, or a classroom-by-classroom discussion that there was an overt racist incident in our school where a Black student was called a racial slur and that we at Whittier simply will not tolerate this. We will not tolerate racism. We take it very seriously, so seriously that we are all having a discussion about racism today and that we will have one every time one of these incidents happens. In regards to the longer, sorry, I'm almost, longer-term interventions, what has the district done to handle things like this in the past? To Jane's point, what is the policy? How are we continually weaving in Jedi justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion into our curriculum? That is not simply about spotlights and don't get me wrong, I love the spotlights. But if we are not, especially for our seven-year-olds, connecting that back to, hey, we are spotlighting a woman of color this month because what she did, she did in the face of this thing called racism and let's talk about what racism is. They are not necessarily connecting the dots. I love my kid, but he's seven. Okay, no, no. Thank you.
Sylia Schwerin?
In the past, they've said all, so.
Okay.
She is a, she takes a, you could...
You can, if you want to be part of the minutes, you can. Well, thanks everyone for coming out and delivering public comment tonight. It's much appreciated. As I said, we value the input and insights that we get from you all. We are going to go to superintendent's remarks now.
So, um... Oh, okay. Uh, doesn't matter. I don't need a deck. Um, I think, um... Do you have that? Okay, I'll go ahead and get started while we're calling the deck up. Um, I think we heard, uh, I wanted to say we heard a call for, um, a safe environment for all students, especially Black and Brown students. I just wanna start with that tonight. Um, that call is a shared one and it's not, it's also not optional. The call for inclusion and fairness that we heard is a shared one and it's also not optional. If there are concerns, I think it's important that we speak to the people closest to the incident to, and I think you, you know, we heard allusion to this, that, um, have an opportunity to talk and understand and learn together because we're not, we're talking about complex things like biases that we're walking around with in our head and we need to talk about them. We need to learn differently. We need to change our behaviors. And every adult in our system is part of that solution and it's not acceptable to not respond. It's not acceptable for us not to engage. Those are requirements. And if that's happening, that you're not getting a response, I wanted to be clear that that's not okay and that you do need to escalate that so that you do get a response. And that we sit down with, you know, not just the administrators, but all of us that are involved so that we can learn and grow and create a different kind of district. I think it's important that, you know, that we also talk about the fact that words and talking to each other and learning, uh, together are part of the solution. But if we're gonna have a substantive impact on the kinds of things we're talking about here, like historic racism, then we're also gonna need to change the way that we use our resources, time, people, and money. Just continuing to do the same thing and talk differently or use different words is not going to lead to a different outcome. And so we're gonna have to need to have some courageous conversations about resources. Time, people, money, technology, how do we actually place dollars in ways that are different than the way that the system is set up right now? We also need to come together differently, not one group. I can have the title of superintendent and you can have as many administrators. That's not going to solve the problem. We actually need to show up differently, learn differently, connect differently, and do our work differently. Every single one of us, self-included, if we're gonna get to a different result. Because it's not like we have really any examples of school districts as diverse as ours coming together in the way we're trying to come together that have gotten this done. So if we think we're following someone's playbook, we're gonna get there, that's just, it's not true. We are doing something that hasn't been done and it will require that we do things differently. I think we need to have some courageous conversations about that, about whose voices get heard, who gets to speak for whom, and whose voices are not heard, including our students. And especially as we talked about our Black and Brown students. And so instead of talking about it, what we've done and what we're doing is all of our school improvement plans are built around the experiences of our focal cohort students. And what that means is we are saying as a school district, we are challenging ourselves to center the students who have historically been underserved, for whom the system is not designed. And we've asked ourselves, how do we need to think differently? And you have heard even in public comment how people are thinking differently, connecting differently. That's us moving resources differently. And that's what it's gonna take to get to this vision of universal student success. And I want to say on the agenda tonight, that's the next slide, um, are areas of work and things that we're trying to do, um, that make this work more transparent, that invite you to be part of it, we do not get it right all the time, but we are trying to be more transparent, more inclusive, and try to figure out how we need to reinvent our organization. And that's not, like I said, something that comes out in an email. It's actually something that we're gonna need to figure out and we miss some things and sometimes the critical questions and the critical feedback are also part of that change process and so we welcome it. I think tonight we have on the agenda several things that are related to the big work in the district. We have a presentation on workforce diversity and the strategic staffing cycle. The most important resource we have is the people that we put in front of our teachers, in front of our students. And the impact of our teachers is immeasurable. And we need to think about why does the data indicate that our Black teachers are leaving the district? We need to ask, what's that experience and how are we gonna change that? So you'll see that data and you'll see some of the things we're working to do, to change, and we invite you to be part of that culture change work. We need you to be part of that culture change work. You'll also see on tonight's, um, agenda, community guidelines for giving. This is about our policies that require resource equity. We have, we heard about like the generous spirit of Oak Park. That's awesome and amazing. And people driving around to like, how can we use our resources in a smart way to bring experiences to our students? We also have a community that's eager to donate and to be part of, you know, fundraising and bring beautiful experiences and opportunities to our students. We've gotta, we've gotta balance that with our commitment to have resource equity across our schools. And so what you're gonna see tonight is a framework for how do we actually put administrative guidelines in place that implement those policies that do call for, not an option, to be inclusive and equitable in how we do our work. And you'll see two, then we'll have the framework and then you'll see two actual donations come forward. One for a Gaga pit at Bai and the other one around Black excellence education. Ultimately, we know that if we are not achieving universal student success, it's because something's broken in the system. It's not, it's not the students. It's us. It's what we are offering our students. We've got to rewire the system and that's what we're looking to do. Ultimately, the deficit is in what we offer to our students. And we've gotta rewire and change that system. That's the courageous work. You'll also see on the agenda is the access to algebra. And I'm gonna spend a couple minutes talking about some of, um, just some of our commitments in that space. Um, the access to algebra work is part of our broader commitment to make sure every student has access. And we include every, advanced students should always be challenged in this district, always. That is our commitment. Uh, everybody getting, everybody stretching, everybody becoming, every student on the path to where they're going. Uh, that's the vision. We also have a master facility plan, uh, on the agenda today. And, you know, even just in the last few days, there have been such, um, amazing gatherings in the community around sustainability and around coming together as a community. So we're excited to bring forward, um, agenda items that reflect these values and that, um, you know, that are our work together to put them into practice, to really make this an inclusive place, a place where we challenge ourselves and challenge each other to serve all of our students. So those are the presentations and the first one tonight is our master facility.
Good evening. Tonight, within the master facility plan and sustainability update, we will provide updates regarding the following. The sustainability task force update, which will be presented by Dr. Sheila Johnson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. And, uh, the community solar update, which will be presented by Becky Thompson with Nania Energy. As you are aware, we currently have a request for proposal out for the installation of rooftop solar panels at Holmes, Julian, and Longfellow. The district does not have sufficient roof space to install solar panels to fully offset the district's electricity usage. The sustainability task force, um, the installation of solar panels and participation in community solar projects are integrally connected to the master facility plan to, excuse me, to integrate sustainability into each step of the process and plan. The master facility plan phases overview, which will be presented by Jennifer Costanza with STR Partners, uh, will be our final piece of this presentation. I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Johnson.
Good evening. Uh, what you see here is a timeline for the sustainability task force. So the board, you approved a sustainability policy in, uh, last December. And within that policy, the superintendent is tasked with, is assigned with creating a sustainability task force. So we've had two rounds of applications so far. So in the first round, we received about 15 applications and we interviewed, uh, most of those applicants, the ones that, uh, replied to our communication. Uh, thank you to Amanda. She helped us create a sustainability task force flyer and we sent that flyer out and we also put communication in the school newsletters. So after that, we received the 15 applications for the first round. We, um, met with the applicants. We had a few questions for them. We interviewed them to talk about their interest on the sustainability task force. Um, this December, we had a meeting greet with those nine applicants, which went very well. Um, each applicant told us about their background and what interests them and why they wanted to sit on the sustainability task force. And we have two rounds because after the, after the meeting greet, we received more applications. So we wanna make sure we give every applicant... So we want to make sure we give every applicant a chance to be heard and a chance to participate in the process. So right now, we're currently in round two of reviewing the application. And after that, we will provide an update to the group on the next steps. We're thinking about creating subgroups within the task force to work on different aspects of a sustainability policy. We only have two meetings scheduled right now, and that's in March and in May. But we're going to add more meetings to the schedule because we need to meet more frequently in order to create the sustainability plan. So as the policy calls for, the plan must be created within one year of seeding the task force. So we're hoping that happens by December of next year. Next, like I said, we had nine applicants for the first round and then, I mean, 20, 15 applicants for the first round. And out of that, we had nine applicants. And then the second round, we talked to two. So so far, we have 11 members on the task force and it's not including the administrators. And with that, I will turn it over to Becky from Nenea. She's going to give an update on the community solar.
Thank you, thank you for having me this evening. So community solar, just as a little background, this is not the onsite solar request for proposals that's currently open. So community solar represents a way to engage in renewable energy in exchange for a discount to your utility rates without participating in any purchase or installation of onsite solar infrastructure. It was originally designed in Illinois to make solar accessible for people that it's otherwise not. So community solar is actually open to residential. You can sign up for your home. And the way that it works is that if you've ever driven down the interstate and seen these really large solar fields out in the middle of nowhere and there's no houses nearby and you're like, what, what's going on here? Why is this out there? So basically that ties into the grid and puts green energy onto the grid. It creates renewable energy. Developers on Wall Street, usually third-party investors are purchasing and building out these systems. Then they're getting subscribers to take, off-take that power. And there are a lot of incentive programs out for solar right now. The district is actually going to be eligible for some of those with your, your specific onsite solar projects. And in exchange for them getting these incentives and then having subscribers kind of purchase the power from these fields, they are sharing the savings model with those that are subscribing. So for residents, this can be 20 to 30% of your utility bill. And for larger commercial and industrial sized users in Illinois, the discounts are about 5 to 10% of your electricity cost. So this is a way to help hit some of your sustainability initiatives by participating in renewable energy for the schools where onsite solar is not a viable option currently based off of roof space or roof age, while still reaping the benefits financially of that discount. So it's kind of a dual benefit scenario. So with that in mind, we went out to the market, to the community solar developers that have available, available space for you to subscribe, just for the locations that are not currently engaged in the onsite solar RFP. The reason for that is that we think that eventually those that will have onsite solar will also be able to participate in community solar, but we don't know how your usage is going to change and fluctuate quite yet. So that is a not yet kind of mentality. So this just evaluates all the facilities that are not currently within that onsite solar project. With that, we have three respondents for community solar developers with varying degrees of discounts and contract terms. You can see up here that it's about 5 to 10%, depending on the actual provider. And there are some nuances with the contracts. So we actually invited, if, look, Arcadia and Ampean, the two below, had very similar responses. There weren't much difference between the two of them. So we actually invited Nexamp and Ampean to participate in an interview process with us. So they were able to do a presentation of what their, their scope of services included, what their contract looked like, and then engage in some question and answering through that process. Through that interview discovery, Nexamp came out kind of on top from our recommendation standpoint. They have availability starting in probably Q1 of 2025, whereas the other two providers were about two years out for a waitlist for an open field and open availability. They did represent a longer contract, but they also had about double the savings offering as well. And so with that, we're really just providing an update to you that currently looking at the contract or requested a contract from Nexamp for review and negotiations of what those terms would include, taking into account specific provisions such as if they wanted to add onsite solar to any of those facilities that are under consideration, what would that look like? And so Nexamp is preparing that contract for review from the district. But if it moves forward, then it would be about estimated $50,000 in utility cost savings annually for the 20-year term with projected savings expected to start late fall of 2025. Any questions about it?
Can you just like, can we go like one level deeper on the implications of a 20-year term contract and the potential addition of onsite solar and the implications for us being locked into a 20-year contract and like what, what's the like logic that you all have put into that equation?
Yeah, so the provisions in the contract that we're specifically asking Nexamp to include is that if any onsite solar was considered for facilities that are under this contract, that it would be a 24-month notice, which is typically a construction timeframe for onsite solar anyway. So you could provide them notice that you were considering onsite solar and then they would allow you to do that without penalty. The reason for the longer-term contract is from a standpoint, you're essentially taking an anchor position, being a larger user for these commercial fields. So if you think of like a new mall coming in, they want an anchor tenant before they can kind of parse out some of the smaller, they want someone that's going to be around for a long period of time before they make the multimillion dollar investment, which is why Nexamp is one of the largest national, national providers. And so because they have the most favorable discount and the quickest turnaround time, I think that they're able to kind of ask for that longer contract term, which makes their investors have a higher level of comfortability.
I guess then like if we're waiting to look into community solar for the schools that are going to have onsite solar because we're not sure what our energy use is, what's the flip side of that in this fact pattern?
So you could, it's far easier to add additional facilities in than it is to remove dedicated. So that was part of the consideration with the open proposal. We know that that usage is going to come down for those specific sites. So maybe not include those right out of the gate, but we could always add those into the contract at a later date. With some of the other schools that are not yet considered, we don't really have a definite timeframe of when onsite solar would, you know, happen if at all with some of those. So we don't want to risk the discount disappearing or community solar not being a viable option. So getting you those savings immediately was kind of the thought process behind that.
Okay, that's helpful, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
And some of those similar questions were asked and the representatives from Nexamp, they are very flexible. We appear to be flexible with the contract. So they say we could have put some of those provisions in the contract. So once they send the contract, then we will review and make sure some of those provisions aren't in there.
Yeah, we want this to be a win for you, not something that you feel beholden to.
I have a question. So are there, I understand putting solar panels on the roof and how that works. This is new to me. So are there any structural changes that we would have to make for community solar? So it's coming from the grid?
Correct, yes. So this is, it's a fancy paper exchange, if you will. So it's going to be a transfer of credit on your ComEd invoice. There's not any actual electrons that will be flowing from this community solar field to your school. Does that make sense? So it's really, it's, it's going to be negative, a credit on one bill and then a charge on another bill. And the difference between the two is the net savings, the 10% that we see here.
But are we still doing something for sustainability by doing it or is it just a money thing?
We're buying solar energy.
So the case that can be made from a sustainability standpoint is additionality is the term. So there, as you dedicating 20 years, making a 20-year commitment to a community solar farm, that may not have existed without your 20-year commitment. You are providing additional green energy onto the grid as a result of your commitment to that. Did I speak in a circle there? Did that make sense? There's a new, there's a new asset as a result of your commitment.
I know, I totally, I, I get that, but my point is, we talk about with our community about making our buildings green. We're not changing our buildings to make them green. We're just committing to supporting solar, right?
Well, we're doing both. So community solar is part of a larger package. We can't meet our energy needs through rooftop solar alone. So this is to pick up the remainder essentially. And then in terms of like efficiency and things like that, that's much, I think that's more part of the master facilities plan than this. But solar is a big piece of that sort of overall sustainability.
But it doesn't sound like we're accessing the actual solar energy.
They're building it, they're providing it to the grid based on our commitment contractually to buying the energy that they are putting into.
Yes, sustainability is a.
And therefore our usage, right?
I'm sorry?
And therefore our usage. No, we're not using it.
Yeah, it doesn't impact your usage.
Yeah, we're not.
Your usage would remain the same.
So our, right, that, and that's, that's my point too. We're not using it ever at all.
But I guess where I'm saying though, I think the point I'm risking, are we committing to this? Like if we didn't commit to this, we would still be using that energy. And we would be using energy from coal plants. And we wouldn't, there would be no offset anywhere in the system.
We are causing them to build.
To add this.
We're helping them build this solar farm.
Which then goes into the overall energy collective.
And they need people to make commitments that are large users because then that allows that, oh, got it. Okay, but.
Because that, that energy goes into the whole energy collective system of the area.
So then you still need people to use the energy.
So it goes.
We're not using the energy.
It's a generator, it's a generator of energy, just like a coal plant or a nuclear plant or natural gas generation. It goes straight into the same grid infrastructure, like the power lines, right?
Is it fair to say that like what energy we're using, we're offsetting by per, by having solar energy available to someone else?
I, so to have, to, to claim an offset, you would actually have to purchase.
Offset's a term of.
Yeah.
Our carbon footprint is not being reduced.
So here, here's.
Well, it is being reduced.
Yeah. I, I understand, yeah, I understand. So the state of Illinois has made a commitment that by the year of 2050, as part of the Climate Equitable Jobs Act, that energy that is created and distributed in the state of Illinois will be 100% green-backed, which does not mean that we're closing every coal plant. It means that there will be as, as much renewable energy on the grid as there is brown power or coal power to offset, to use, to use your term. The, the way that you kind of make the net difference between the two is through a renewable energy credit or a solar renewable energy credit. So if anyone has ever come to you and talked about SREC, it's actually part of the payback that you get for your onsite solar. An SREC is the piece of paper that says there is new renewable energy that is on the grid as a result of this solar farm. ComEd and Ameren Downstate, the state of Illinois, they need to purchase these certificates to prove that 100% offset by 2050, right? They're not, they're not building all green infrastructure. They're doing pretty well with the brown power that's out there. So they're going to purchase these certificates. They need to purchase these certificates from massive renewable energy sources, ID large community solar farms. So the offset and the claim to direct sustainability is being purchased by ComEd from this particular community solar field that we're referencing. So Oak Park School District cannot claim the direct offset, but what you can claim is additionality and you get to claim some of the savings in the interim before we're able to do the onsite solar for these other facilities. It is in addition to some of the sustainability initiatives that you have. It's not one or the other. They're stackable.
And correct me if I'm wrong with this analogy. It's like if you have a bucket that you're supposed to provide energy for all of Illinois. And right now, it's being provided all by brown power. And we're saying, hey, we're going to fund this green piece over here. So part of that energy is now being provided in the bucket by that green energy. So everybody's taking from the bucket separately. There's not like a direct line from us to the green field. But because you have done this, the amount of green energy in that bucket increases. Is that?
Yeah, that's a fair analogy. I think it's important to remember that sustainability is a spectrum. It's not black and white. And so the claim to savings or additional renewable energy being on the grid as a result of some of your efforts here is still a sustainable initiative. It may not hit every single bit of your sustainability policy, but it's certainly a step in the right direction. So is that helpful? I know we won't raise the weeds on that. You guys are going to be rolling around with this later, like, what are we talking about?
Well, I think it's important for the community to know that what we're not doing is like directly, like that this is a, this is a strategy and it's a viable strategy and it's a strategy about being part of a community and part of the solution on a larger scale. But it's not like Oak Park, we're not going to be able to claim that Oak Park is powering its schools on solar energy. It's not what we're doing.
Well, I would think of it like if you put $5 in the bank and you take out $5, it may not be the exact dollar bills that you put in. But you're taking out something you put in. So we're causing a certain amount of kilowatts to go into the grid that are green and then we're taking out that many kilowatts. So it's not directly plugged into our buildings, but I don't think the fact that it's not directly plugged into our buildings doesn't mean that we're not getting green, we're not energizing our buildings, providing energy to our buildings that's renewable.
Totally.
I, I see savings on here, annual and then contract savings. I'm still a little fuzzy on this, so admittedly. Is there an initial, like, we're needed because we are a larger consumer and as would any other mall, college or whatever. Is there an initial investment in our?
No.
I'll get there. Okay. I guess there's, I don't understand why you'd say no.
I'm sorry.
This feels too good to be true. And I'm not trying to be, but I don't know why someone would say no.
Right.
You're not asking me for any money. I'm going to feel good because I am contributing to a greener environment, like roundabout sustainability. And I know we have these solar panels that we're going to be putting on a couple of roofs for our school, further reducing our carbon footprint. I'll just say it that way. So I, I guess, yeah, I don't really see why someone would say no.
The biggest headwind when I start talking about this, because it's so dense and there's so much nuance to it, and when we get into the weeds, is that exact sentiment of it sounds too good to be true. Not everyone is eligible for community solar. If you are not a public entity, then you have to be investment-grade credit because if you are making a 20-year commitment, they want to make sure that you're still there in 20 years. So public entities are far and away their preferred clientele because you have good credit, you pay your bills on time, and you'll still be here in 20 years. And the, the biggest pain that we're seeing with this, like the other two respondents have a two-year wait time because the queue is that thick, that there are that many people vying to get in. Home Depots and the Starbucks of the world are really sucking up a lot of this available space. And so we're trying to get, bring this to the public as much as we can. The only downside as we see it is that it is the contract term, it's the 20 years. I understand why they have a longer term and that's usually the biggest headwind when we bring it before a board is just.
And the farm, has the farm been built?
No. So, so your commitment, so for the state of Illinois, for them to get what's called notice to proceed, to be able to then start investing and build it and get the permitting, they have to have a certain amount of off-take. And so your entering into the contract would then make them eligible to move forward with that process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Another factor that might help explain why it feels too good to be true is that it's actually cheaper to produce renewable energy than fossil fuel energy. So that's part of where the savings comes from, is that we're actually going with a cheaper source of energy.
With, with the current incentives being what they are. Yeah, that, that's why the onsite solar actually makes sense for the facilities that are currently eligible because it's a three or four-year ROI where traditionally it's been four times that. Return on investment, absolutely. Great question, so. I know it's, it's a, it's an interesting concept, but it's a great, it's a great initiative, especially having that projected potential savings starting next year instead of three years from now, is a way for you to start seeing immediate savings on your utility bills. And the, the contract itself is not a fixed rate, it's just a fixed discount. So as energy prices go up and down, that 10% applies to if energy prices go up, then that's going to be a larger realized savings. Goes down, it'll be smaller, it will vary year to year based off your actual energy costs. Goes down, it'll be smaller, it will vary year to year based off your actual energy costs.
I think one of the things that's difficult or like difficult to adjust, and I wonder Venus if this is what's happening too, is like, we're used to analyzing things about kind of that individual benefit or like what's the cost benefit for our own organization? You know, like what's the bottom line? And in this case, there's, there's multiple things happening. There's still a bottom line benefit, but we're also like changing the way we think about metrics and about impact and about, you know, there's this shared notion of collective wealth, power and energy. So I just, I, I guess as I'm getting new and introduced to the sustainability effort, I wonder what you think about that. There just seems to be, it, it kind of shakes some of our assumptions when we're analyzing something. And so that way we're kind of like, wait a minute. It's because it's different than how we're used to analyzing. I don't know what you would think about that or-
Yeah, I think that's a really wise interpretation of it. And the, the term community solar, we think that it means it's in our community. It just means it's in ComEd territory. It may be two hours away from your actual school district. Community means that it is available to members of the community. And so it's a sense of public entities, small businesses, your residents. You know, you can encourage your parents to join this program and say, we are an anchor tenant of this specific field in this location. And then they may be eligible for 20 or 40% discount on their ComEd invoice as a result of participating in the same subscribe field as you are. So it's a way for you to bring Climate and Equitable Jobs Act. It's specific to make this equitable, to make renewable energy available to everyone, not just people who can afford to put a rooftop solar panel up. This is a way for everyone to participate and secure some savings as a result. So it actually meets your sustainability, but it actually could also, the case could be made for some of your DEI initiatives as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Next, we would turn it over to Jennifer to start the discussion on the master facility plan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. What we see up here is the timeline that we've shared for the master facility plan over the next year. We have kind of moved through phase one. We're solidly in phase two to be followed up next late winter and spring in phase three. And I'll share the overview of the different phases in the next slide. And then hopefully, hoping to wrap up and get an adoption of the plan next September. So just to kind of briefly remind all of us what the different phases are. Phase one is, it's meant to set the goals and some expectations and identify the stakeholders that we are hoping to engage in order to inform the master plan. And then also to gather the existing data that we have available from the district as well as out on site. Phase two, which is really where we're in the bulk of right now, is the assessment and discovery phase. So that has been a lot of conducting of studies. So we're going to use those studies to inform the overall master plan. Some of those studies involve capacity and utilization studies, the facilities assessments, educational adequacy, sustainability goals and the plan. Phase three, which will be born out of the, out of all these studies, we will start to create options and recommendations for how we can address some of the things that we have found out of our, our research. And we'll begin to identify costs with those options and then have those options vetted with the facility advisory committee. Phase four will then start to finalize those options. Again, work with the facility advisory committee to prioritize and create a framework for how we prioritize those options, finalize the costs, identify target annual costs so that that gives us a target for how we move forward with that prioritization. And then phase five is just to adopt and implement the plan and get approval and figure out how we can start moving forward. So the update as to where we are, just a, a quick reminder, our goals here are really to assess your educational adequacy and the spaces as well as your physical conditions of your assets and figure out how we can address the curriculum space at the same time that we're addressing facility needs so that we can best maximize your dollars and benefit all the district and the taxpayers. So for, to share with you some of the studies that we've begun working on and where we're going. The capacity and current utilization, we have completed our facility walkthroughs for all of the schools with each principal and PTO members. What's happening now with that is that we're creating utilization plans to show how the spaces are being used and we're documenting some of the concerns that came out of those studies with the principals. Additionally, we are drafting a capacity analysis based on the enrollment projections from the study with Consarta that you had done in 2022, as well as the historical enrollment data that we have in order to just confirm that we have the right number of spaces for the students that are attending those schools. Our next step is to meet with the district administration in order to confirm the assumptions that have been made so that we can finalize that report. And then the next steps will be compiling a report for both of those studies in order to highlight any outliers and share any concerns and how they should be addressed. This is an example of one of the space utilization plans. This is the first floor of Brooks, just kind of giving you an idea. We're, we're trying to graphically show how the spaces are being used. Our next step will be working on how we identify which areas have some issues that we should be talking about and highlight those. And similarly with the elementary schools, this is just an example of homes. But we're in progress with, with each of the facilities. For the facility conditions assessment, we have completed the roofing surveys for each of the facilities. And currently, right now, they are compiling the report and putting together recommendations and some estimates. We will be meeting with the facilities advisory committee as well as John and his team in order to identify the roofing systems so that we can better put together the options and, and those cost estimates. Similarly, for the hardscape conditions surveys, those have been completed at each of the schools and a, a report is being put together for that. The facility assessment, so we have provided to each of the building engineers a workbook, trying to get a high-level idea of any issues or concerns that are coming, come to mind with them right now. They've completed that information, it's been sent back to our consultants. And they will be scheduling, our consultants will be scheduling surveys during winter break to go along with John and his team into each of the facilities and not only look through the workbook, but get eyes on exactly what, what's going on in each facility. And then also for the FAC, we have introduced the master plan with them. We shared with them the, the presentation that was provided to you all in September. They are starting to formalize and volunteer for a subcommittee. So I think somebody was very interested in jumping in right away, so that's always good. So they'll be heavily involved in the conceptual, like towards the end of the conceptualization, phase three, and, and definitely in phase four when we're doing the prioritization and creating that framework. And then also in progress, we're working with John to review some of the legacy items that have been left open from our last capital plan, as well as some lists that he's already shared with our team in order to make sure that those get captured onto the next plan. And for educational adequacy, so we have worked with, and I may forget last names, but Louise and Patrick, as well as the, the core team to identify criteria against which we should be evaluating all the spaces that are currently being used in the facilities. So for elementary schools, making sure that we have the different spaces for the programs that are required at elementary and also at the middle school level. We're going to be continuing evaluating those findings and confirming that criteria once we get these plans, I think, put together. It'll, it'll help us inform that discussion as well. And then from the principal walkthroughs, you know, documenting any issues or concerns that they have of being able to serve the programs that are required at each the elementary and middle school level so that that can again inform our options and recommendations moving forward. An, an example, this is kind of the list that's been put together for the elementary schools and the criteria of just the bare minimum spaces that are required in each of those schools so that we can check against equity and make sure parity is happening between the elementary as well as the middle schools. And as for stakeholder engagement, we had shared a list that's an evolving list. I think we're continuing trying to add people as we can for each of those various studies. So you can see the, the little orange arrows showing the ones that we're kind of already engaging and in progress with. The green arrows or checkmarks are just that because we've completed that space utilization survey, does not mean that we're finished talking with the principals or the PTO. We're definitely going to keep them involved. But it's kind of showing where we are with each of those studies in this phase two and what's yet to come with the little gray checkmarks that we have. My God.
Did you have good participation from the PTOs?
I think that there were at least half of the schools where the PTO was able to make it to the, it was kind of a last minute maybe thing. But yeah, they were, they were very involved and their, their input was really helpful.
So on the ones where they weren't able, is there maybe another opportunity since the last one was last?
Yeah, in fact, and I ended every survey saying, you know, this isn't the last you're going to see. Yes, there will be plenty of opportunities.
And as we build these programs and are ready to launch, how is that being communicated to the school community? Is that something?
You guys will communicate to a lot of the principal or you having the principal share that information with them?
I'm sorry, which part is it you wanted to say?
So as you're ready to launch some of the changes in, at each of the schools based upon your survey results, right?
Yeah.
How are you, how is that information about, hey, here's what to expect, here's what changes are happening? How's that going to be communicated to each school community?
Yeah, I think that's something that we will be working with together. I think first we have to decide, you know, what framework and what guidelines we're going to affect what happens at each school, like where the priorities are. And then I think we come together and, and determine how we involve each of the schools. And there's been talk of having different schools attend the FAC committee meetings in order to kind of talk through what the options are and how that fits with them. So I think that's a conversation that we still are having. But I, I appreciate you bringing it up because it shouldn't be lost.
Thank you. And speaking of things that shouldn't be lost, to Holly's point, can we just make sure that we're doing a checklist for each of them to make sure we get to the PTOs? I know they're going to be offered more opportunities, but just make sure that we're not missing those.
All right, well, thank you all.
Oh, I have a couple other questions.
Oh, go ahead.
So you had mentioned learning spaces, like possibly updating them when the walls are open, like you say, so that, but you just did the referendum updating of learning spaces. What's an example of, we, we did the libraries and we kind of had those conversations about learning spaces like in the last, whatever, five or six years? So can you just give an example of what that might be of, of learnings?
There was one, still a point where you said it was like phase, yeah. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
You said there, it was these arrows and the bottom said, learning spaces when you have the back of the, or it's beginning. I was hold, I could have asked the question. Back a little further, back, back. Right there. Address curricular space needs at a time. What is a curricular space need?
So some of the high-level findings that came out of the tours, there are spaces within schools that, such as Man and Bi and there was even a space at Lincoln where it's like an open pod, right? So there, there's difficulty in scheduling those spaces because of how classes function, right? So, so that's one of, one of the opportunities. I think that the other thing that came out was a, a need for more intervention, small group, class-sized spaces, especially at the middle school level. There are opportunities to make that happen at the ends of the wings and they're kind of being used that way now, but it's an open space. And again, it's disruptive and not really a dedicated space. So I think those are the kinds of curricular needs that I think are beginning to come out of that. And there are probably a few others that, as we go through this, that will affect the learning environment.
No, I, I understand that. I, I ask that because I have another question, which is we're seeing enrollment changes and we also know that special needs, you choose your point about intervention, like our needs change. And so like building a wall somewhere, right? That kind of changes a space. And then our need, our enrollment changes or our needs change. And then is that space still usable? I, I guess I just want to keep in mind that whatever our demographics look like right now and our needs are now, we just need the flexibility. Because we can't, you know, to, we shouldn't be doing permanent changes, I think, to structure when we are seeing some enrollment fluctuations and we don't, I don't, right? Things change.
The hope is that we'll be able to find ways to repurpose space or redistribute space, at least with some of the programs. I know there's concern about how programs are located that they don't directly feed into necessarily their home, middle school. And so keeping peers together is a concern and not knowing yet exactly how all this is going to shake out. But I, I agree, flexibility is definitely the key and that's the, the trend anyway. Moving forward, and another example of learning spaces is science labs that are completely not flexible in middle schools right now. It's something that we can touch-
And also outdated, like these are yes.
Yes, very, very outdated. So yes, flexibility is the key and, and meeting different types of needs. I think we were somewhat successful with that with the learning libraries that we did or the learning centers that were done because we had these Tinker Labs and these STEAM Labs. The STEAM lab could be used by either the library or become an overflow classroom if it needed to be or other things. So keeping those kinds of opportunities in mind as we're looking at all of these space utilization plans is, is really going to be key.
One of the things I've done over the years, when we talk about building some of these smaller spaces, if we're taking a room and dividing it into two, we make sure that the way the heating, air conditioning controls, fire alarm, audiovisual devices are all set up to function for both rooms. So then it's a factor whether or not the walls there or not, whether or not we have to redo HVAC, fire alarm systems, intercomp systems. We can have all that stuff in place and make the room more flexible long-term as we're looking at upgrading these different systems, including fire alarm and those things. So it's really being intentional about building in not just the change, but the flexibility as we go.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, Holly, and the answers as well. I think the notion of flexibility, up and down everything we do. So when we talk about universal design for learning, it's about saying even within the classroom, instead of like, you know, definitely not like desks bolted to the, you know, the floor, but really more choices for students, like I, I, it's better for me to do this work in this space even within a classroom. So even when we're talking with, you just described, John, when we have, when we are dividing spaces, how do we make it so that it can be bigger or smaller with movable walls? You know, things like this, being smart about that. I think, and I'm glad you referenced kind of instructional program placement because that's another piece of, I think, an upcoming phase is to, and, and just to kind of highlight what Jennifer just talked about. Making sure we're being thoughtful about if our students that have special need, you know, have special needs are placed at a school other than their home school for a program, how might we make sure that across both of our feeder patterns, they would have an opportunity to be placed at a program in the ideal scenario so that they still end up going to middle school with the peers, you know, that, that they live with or live around? You know, thinking about what's that whole trajectory of the experience? And it, because I think-
But that one we got to be careful about, right? Because people move and they, like the population-
Yes.
Could be in a different place. And so, and I think, yes, but like I would, I would hate to cater to the current population and in five years we have a different population.
Well, and that's the thing, you, I think you're raising that, that it's an uncertain situation. So it depends, we might have one year and we, we're, we need to be responsive in our, in our staffing and what the programs we offer to the students we're serving, of course. But just trying to think about things like that. So engaging our special education leaders in helping to think about that. You know, we've got these great co-taught classrooms. What, what are our teachers' experiences too? Or what have we heard from our families and our students that might inform how we place programs? Donna, you know, getting her insights and thoughts based on what she's heard from families. That's, I think, what I appreciate about the process is it's really making sure we connect and listen to, you know, to what are the experiences of our families.
And then my last question, I know that we are looking at, I don't know, wants and needs for lack of a better way to decide. And I know we've, we've had, you know, this A column, B column, C column, done it a bunch of different ones. I guess, so a lot of, so I think needs are the easiest, right, to prioritize? But then, once we get to the wants section, I think it would be great to have kind of planned for some conversations about that. Include teachers and community members and board members and things like that because one person's like number one thing they want is, could be very different than someone else's. And I think it's really important that we, you know, just try to decide how we're going to prioritize. And I'm not saying everyone gets a vote, I'm meaning like all 55,000 people at Oak Park. But, but, you know, so we can talk about it. And then the question is, from an equity standpoint, what if one school, community finds one want? And it's the same- and it's the same cost as another want, more important for their community, right? So I just think there's a lot, I think we're having this conversation with PTO and the giving, and it's the same concept. If we've got, you know, three things that are all on the want column and one school wants one of them and another wants another, another wants another, they're all the same cost, are we willing to have schools do different things? I mean, is that part of the conversation, like you said, about programming needs? If you have to place people at different schools, like how willing are we to have different facility based offerings, like physical offerings to school communities based on? The needs part, like I said, is somebody who kept a heat and pitchback, like fire alarms, but those are easy, right? But, you know, different shapes to classrooms and physical spaces.
And then, you know, conversations with the carryout effects are, because as you were talking about, with population changes-
Right, then they don't, then they want to-
And all of a sudden one school's like, well, why don't they have that and we don't?
Yes, that's, that's the best point, right? Getting ahead of the swings conversation and like where, you know, we did, we did the playgrounds. What, and now this group of parents would like new playgrounds, again, I don't blame them. Things, playgrounds change, like the interest change. So how do we try to think about that? I was off.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. All right, next up, 3D workforce diversity and strategic staffing cycle, workforce diversity data.
So we have Dr. Natasha Campbell Tominoff and Dr. Anna Colander coming up with this presentation.
All right, so hi. So Hannah and I are going to review kind of just some overall things that have been happening in some professional learning, workforce information, just overall HR and where we're looking to go with some projections, timelines for staffing. We've talked about our big idea. This is our team that we've been working with. We've touched all the departments, core instruction, which includes teaching and learning, student services. And so we've really been working collaboratively across all areas, early childhood included. So professional learning, workforce diversity and strategic staffing are our topics. Dr. Shaw talked about our big idea earlier today. And as we've been working through all of our presentations, we've really been trying to highlight where these particular presentations are hitting within our equity policy. And so tonight we really are looking at where are we in recruiting, retaining, employing, supporting our staff, professional development as where, as well as how are, how can our students benefit? And then supporting one another throughout. Additionally, tonight, because we have been really working across the organization, we're gonna talk about goals that hit upon how we lead, we learn and we celebrate together. Got a little backwards there. But then also, how are we gonna be aligning our resources? So we're gonna be working in one and three. So in one, we're gonna be talking about all professional learning and just what are some of our objectives related to the equity policy? But then also, how are we relating that to instruction and where are we going with that? What's our, what is our model? How is that model playing out? And then in the three area in regard to goal three, as we're aligning our resources, just where are we? That's 3C and 3D. So in 3C, it really gets into how are we starting to look at addressing our gaps? But then also, where are we looking at our resources? How are we starting to try to align that, making things a little bit more transparent? And just with our staffing plan, how can we show where we're going and how we're looking at for 25, 26? So a couple of the things that we really wanted to just kind of point out is we are in the process of working on a multi-year professional learning plan. As you know, we have been working on just what are our processes and procedures in HR along the way? And then what's the integration, what's the communication? How are we making that, those things, not just transparent? But what are the protocols and procedures that we're letting staff know about as we are doing those things? And then again, as we started at the end of last school year, when I started, it was pretty clear that we wanted to make sure that we had a plan going into staffing for this year and starting early and communicating those as early as possible and making that, that process more transparent and collaborative. So you've seen the slides several times, we're gonna keep it up here again because we want to make sure that it's professional learning across the organization. But how are we integrating it? And one of the things that we wanted to identify is some of the things that we're really asking ourselves as we're working on professional learning is we're asking these three key questions. And so our three key questions are, who are we? Sorry, the little animations and I'm like, okay, it's nine o'clock, I've had a lot of coffee. Who are we, what are we trying to do? What are we trying to achieve? And then how are we going to get to universal student success? So as we're trying to achieve, as we're trying to move forward, we're asking our question, how do we get there? Who are we trying to be? And then how are we exemplifying that? And then how are we seeing that in our students? So we've got our January Institute Day, so that's really been like on our, on our radar. But it's not just January, we've also gotta look at March. And then we've gotta look at April and then how does that lead into our summer and then even into August? So we started out with our three August Institute Days and January, March and April. So we've really tried to say, our Institute Days are really gonna be focused on equity, the framework for teaching, performance evaluations and safety and compliance. So we're tying all of our professional learning around those concepts. And so if somebody's saying, well, we've got the pilot and the non-pilot schools, but what are they doing and how are those conversations? Or how are those professional learning pieces tying back to those strands? And so if people aren't part of those, so even our AAs, what are they gonna be learning? And how can we tie it back to those? So they might be working in safety and compliance, they might be working on performance evaluations. We might be working on, if they're not part of one of those, maybe they're in a department meeting working on strategies and things like that, that we can tie back to the framework. Or what equity presentations, what are we starting to do around implicit bias? So some of those things that we want to start building into all of our trainings and Institute Days. So making sure that we've got some consistency as we start to build that multi-year plan. So as we move into thinking about SY26, then the next piece is we have to build, we build every year a professional learning calendar. And that professional learning calendar, some of those spaces are really meetings, right? So we want to actually look at what's on that calendar and decide, are we leveraging those meeting spaces for professional learning? And then taking those meetings off of that, but calling what they are, you know, saying, okay, these are truly meetings and we want them to be meetings? Or can we leverage them to do these things here and actually turn them into professional learning spaces? Because they may have started out as professional learning spaces, but maybe they've turned into meetings. Does that make sense? So we, we have lots of them, but are we doing, are we getting the learning out of them? Are we capitalizing on the, the people in the room, what's happening in the room? And are we really producing what we want? We wanna leverage those times and spaces. So that's kind of the learning spaces and what we're looking to do moving into SY26 in the professional development area. So when we're looking at that though, as we're trying to develop some of these things across the organization, one of the things that we said was, we've got lots of people going out to different, different conferences or different learnings. And so an example is we went to a Zaretta Hammond workshop. But what we did is we took individuals from all these different areas from across the organization. And so this is our hoop. And so all of these people, it's about 20 of us, and then we are coming back. And then what all of those people are doing is, we're now coming back to say, how are we sharing this? What are we putting together so that then we can share this consistently across the organization? And then reflecting to see, how is it actually going to impact student learning? And how is everybody in the organization going to get it, rather than just the 20 of us that went? And so whether it's going to be on a lunch and learn, whether it's gonna be part of a building meeting or whether it's gonna end up on one of our Institute Days, that's going to be one of the models that we use versus just one group goes and then that's just the group that gets it and shares it. So that's kind of like a who would go and then how we would use that model to then share that across the organization. So I'm gonna pause there before I get into this. Question so far on kind of how we're building out the model for the multi-year plan and then how we're hoping to build and use those types of shared learning models for our professional learning.
So I have a quick question on that last slide. You have the question plan piece that has, you know, evaluated effectiveness.
Yes.
When you say evaluated effectiveness, are you evaluating effectiveness of uptake from the adults in the room? Or the impact on the kids in the room or both?
So it'll be both, but initially it would be the adults, right? So the first part would be, did we get it delivered and shared out appropriately? Then hopefully the next piece would be, how did that work with the students? But that's kind of a long-term, a further out piece because we need to be able to get there. We need to be able to, so like, we went to Zaretta Hammond in November. We're now working on trying to develop the presentation that we wanna share out with the buildings. So then, then it's about implementation of it. So then that's, that next piece.
I, I totally get that progression. I would encourage you strongly-
Yeah, yeah.
To ensure that that student component is-
Yes. Yes, because that, because it's gotta get to the implementation.
Ultimately, that determines whether that professional development is impactful.
Impactful, right, yeah. So that's, that's that follow through piece, yeah, so all the way through. Yes, so like even for our, for our August Institute Days, it was, how did, not just how did it go? What do we need to do for the future? And then starting to use that information to even plan for the future too. So that's part of the information we're using even for models like this and planning for our future Institute Days. So we sent surveys out and I think we got not a ton of responses, but a little over 200 responses from our August Institute Days.
I have a couple of questions. Can you, I think it's slide 16, where we talk about, yes, that one, no, one more.
One more?
I mean, the other direction.
Okay.
Shift, that one?
Yes.
Okay, so I think this is a clarifying question and then I have a comment.
Yes.
So currently, there were three Institute Days in August. Through the fall, no Institute Days because they're meetings. And then January, March and April. And you're looking to shift that so that it's?
So all, so in, so we have this professional learning calendar. So all of those things on the, even on the right, all of those things occur now and they're on this professional learning calendar.
Yeah.
It's just that some of them function more as meetings, but they're on this professional learning calendar. So we're saying, are they really doing professional learning during that time? Or are they really just functioning as meetings? So what we wanna do is next year, we wanna say, if it's a meeting, let's just call it a meeting. But if it's gonna be a time where we're doing professional learning and doing a, you know, a share out about what occurred or learning about a strategy or something like that, then we want it on this professional learning calendar.
Okay. I'm just trying to identify, I think I understand you, but in my opinion, there seems to be a gap between August and January. What you're saying is that there are meetings that happen during that time? And some of them have a professional learning component?
Yes.
And you wanna identify the pig and the cow meeting or-
Yes, yes, yeah.
So-
Absolutely.
My next piece is, so this is gonna be really awkward. I'm gonna try to integrate, what I'm looking for is integration.
Yes.
So let me see if I get there.
Yeah.
So if I look at equity, framework for teaching, performance evaluation and even safety, those are some of the categories of professional learning that have happened in the past, which I'm fine with. But what I'm, so we also have a focal cohort in our SIPs, right? Which is our black and brown students. What I want to implore is that within each of those categories, that same focal cohort, focal cohort is front and center so that there is integration. So I, I feel like the professional learning absolutely should contribute and be a significant component of what's happening in those SIP plans.
Yeah, and so I think that that's a part where, like, we didn't get into the context of, so like the Zaretta Hammond professional learning that we did was really around instructional, instructional strategies for diverse learners. And so it really was more so geared towards how do we reach our students that are struggling the most? So it, it was, we're trying to find things that we think are going to most benefit our students. But again, trying to make sure that we do not keep our eyes on what we're really trying to focus on doing. So, and I do think that that's important to make sure that we do those things. And yes, understood.
Yes, I don't, I don't want it to be covert, I want it to be overt.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm asking.
That's what I was saying, yes.
Okay.
All right. So moving on to these pieces. So the next part is that equity piece, that first category was, one of the things that we've been working on is identifying possible partnerships and support for how we can do more coaching, more work around our equity policy. And so we've really been working with, trying to identify whether we're going to work with one organization or multiple organizations to partner with to help us really just kind of further our work. And we've been, we've been engaging with all of these different groups or individuals to see how they could best fit within our organization. So like, we already work with MSAM, we've done previous work with the National Equity Project. And so we work with West 40. And so all of these different groups have sent us proposals. And so now we're trying to fine tune how they might best work within, with us and whether it's an individual project related to like our portrait work. Or, because collaboration does some really ingenious work around students and community and things like that. So just really looking for some things that might be able to bring some, some different perspectives to us. And so we're, we've just really been looking at some things to bring forward to further our equity policy and training for our staff, our community and our students. So just a more holistic picture. So this is on the horizon and so we just wanted to kind of put that out there, that this is soon to come and we'll be bringing those ideas forward for the board in the very near future. And so next up is our workforce equity and data.
Sure. So the next two slides will hopefully feel a little familiar. So we're just pausing to look at some data that we can use to assess our progress on the equity policy. So if you're just pulling out some language on workforce equity in our policy, developing teacher administrator workforce reflective of the diversity of our student body and developing retention plans. So two analytic questions we can ask ourselves to assess our progress on that part of the equity policy is, one, to what extent do our teachers and administrators demographic profiles mirror our students? That is just a large answerable with public data on the ill report card, which we'll look at. And the second is, to what extent are we retaining teaching staff? And the second is, to what extent are we retaining teaching staff across demographic groups across time? So the next few slides, again, will hopefully feel a little familiar. This is, these views are not available on the Illinois Report Card, but the data are on the Illinois Report Card. So I've taken the data and just put it into these particular graphs. So you won't find, it looks like this on the, on the report card, but you should find the underlying data. So pausing here to just digest what we're seeing. So we have the yellow on the leftmost, that's the percentage of our students of each, in each racial, excuse me, racial, ethnic category. The middle bars are the percentage of our teachers, those red bars. And then the blue bars on the right are the percentage of our administrators of each race ethnicity. So you can tell they are comparing first the yellow to red bars. Compared to the student population, D97 teachers are more likely to be white and less likely to be Hispanic or multiracial. And here I'm just calling out categories where I see a difference of about five percentage points. No great reason why I chose five, except that those pop out to me. And then now comparing the administrator, administrator populations of the blue bars to the yellow bars. Compared to the student population, D97 administrators are more likely to be black and less likely to be white, Hispanic, or multiracial. And that's, and that year 24, most recent data. Looking at gender, again, yellow are students. So looking first at teachers and administrators actually together, you can see that most teachers and administrators in D97 are more likely to identify as female compared to our student population. So here now, we're looking at teacher retention rates. So what I've done here is put the three racial, ethnic categories, where there are cell sizes of at least 10, so at least 10 female and/or male student, excuse me, staff, in each category are shown here. So that leaves white, black, and Hispanic teacher retention rates here. And then the bars on the leftmost, that's our overall rates. So what you can see here, again, overall rates are yellow. The red bars represent the retention rates for female students and the blue bars for males. Not males, I said students, teachers, I'm so sorry. This is retention rates for teachers. And so what you can see here is that we retain male teachers of any race, ethnicity at higher rates than female teachers. So you can see those blue bars are above that line showing the retention rate overall. We also retain Hispanic and Black teachers at the lowest rates, especially Hispanic and Black female teachers at the lowest rates. Those are three-year averages that you see in the notes. So now we're looking across time by race, assessing kind of where we are in that excellence and equity target. So over the last four years, you've seen that, you can see that we have improved our teacher retention rates. So that yellow line with the circles as dots shows that we have slightly increased our retention rates. And you can see different lines then for each of those racial, ethnic categories. Unfortunately, what's gone down is the retention rate for Hispanic teachers.
One point that you might want to consider in that data is that there's been a fair amount of turnover in the Lincoln Spanish Immersion Program, and that's where a lot of native Spanish speakers are coming from. So you might want to consider running the data without that subset because that's also tied to the Spanish immersion program and not necessarily the culture of the district per se. You might lose too many of your numbers to make that significant, but that's just one thing I was thinking about in terms of explaining why there's such a big difference.
And that, you will see that in many districts who have not offered signing bonuses or retention bonuses for bilingual programs because that's been a huge incentive across, across districts, especially with
Are we able to identify where we stand with teacher retention with our peer districts? And then also, if you can go back one slide?
I think I did.
Like, so baseline is 2021?
Yep.
What changes occurred between 2021 and 2024 to make our overall go up? To make the changes in all of the categories?
You want to know what happened, why?
Yeah.
I can't concentrate right now.
No, I will.
So here's the same graph, but just for female teachers. So over the last four years, we've seen very slightly improved rates overall for female teachers, but not among, again, Hispanic female teachers. The rate actually went down. And while slightly increased for Black female teachers between 2023 and 24, you see that we're still not quite at the levels we were at at 2021 for our Black female teachers. So again, we might call that excellence, so that equity was slightly increasing, but not for everyone. Same graph, but for male teachers. So we saw actually just a slight decrease in male retention rate between 23 and 24. And again, that's especially among Hispanic males. One happy note is the rate for Black male teachers did increase over time. So we might call that equity without excellence. So you see those lines are coming together, that's equity. But the overall rate is only slightly, not quite, not quite going up each year. So maybe it's equity without excellence. So going back to those questions we asked ourselves, to what extent do our teachers and administrators demographic profiles mirror our students? So if the goal is to mirror the student population demographics, we would need to recruit male teachers and administrators. We need to recruit white, Hispanic, and multiracial administrators. And we need to recruit Hispanic and multiracial teachers. And then we would need to focus on retaining Hispanic and Black teachers, especially Hispanic Black female teachers, based on this data.
Questions?
I had a questioner, I guess a comment maybe similar to what Venus asked, which is just, I think, and I know that we're working to be more consistent with like exit interviews and things, but I think that the qualitative piece of this is really important. Like, why? I mean, if somebody leaves because they retired or they're deciding to have a family and are out of the workforce, like, that's a very different reason than, I had a really negative experience in District 97, and so I'm moving to another district, et cetera. And so obviously you can't create that data tomorrow, but like, just having that over time would be really helpful. And as part of that, it kind of made me think is, and as you were talking about, like, equity and excellence. Like, it's not, there's, it raised a question in my mind of like, what is excellence in this context? Like, it's not 100%, right? People retire, people have life changes, they move, whatever. But maybe this is where looking at peers and sort of broader demographics becomes important because we can, and also qualitative data to figure out, okay, excellence is, if somebody leaves the district, it's not because we weren't providing, you know, them with the supports or opportunities or whatever that they needed to thrive here.
So you're suggesting naming targets for ourselves.
Yeah, and sort of thinking about what does that really mean, right? Like, what, what is, what would an excellent retention kind of, not just rate number, but like, practice look like, right?
And we have started to collect some subjective and objectives, some qualitative and quantitative information from those exit interviews. Because it is an optional piece, we've had some people start to fill those out. Not many, because we haven't, because of the time of year it is, we haven't had many people start to fill them out. But, you know, we have had a few fill it out. And so that's at least the start of the collection on that end. To be able to provide us some of that data, that is at least some actionable pieces that we can start to use to build some, at least some information off of. Okay. So actually, piggyback, piggybacking off of that, what we're using to actually help improve some of those numbers and address some of those pieces in HR, we've started to engage our staff. So we've started to do, from the professional development, we were surveying and we're using that information to build upon our next Institute Days, or what other improvements do we need to make from our exit interviews? We took what we were using that was mostly qualitative, to now we've actually added some quantitative pieces to it so that it's a more holistic view. So we're engaging more of our staff in just more interaction with our staff to get that, collect that information so that then we can actually identify more of what our staff is needing from us so that we're getting more of that one-on-one contact and information so that then we can address more of the staff needs. As we're rolling out more things, we've gotten some good feedback from some of the people using the new portal from our Let's Talk and being able to access that information. So again, it's really just trying to engage with them, finding out what the needs are, and then being able to address those needs. It's a slow process, but being able to do those pieces. As we've brought on one of the new HR managers, we've started to go out to college fairs. And so we've already been to three different job fairs. We've gone to Triton College, we've gone to Illinois State, and we've gone to Northeastern. We're also registered for Dominican, West 40, and the Illinois Association of School Personnel Administrators. Those are coming up in the next couple of months. And then we continue to watch for future job fairs. In all of these cases, we're looking for not just that they're there, but how many people might be participating, who's participating, so that then we're actually not just saying we're signing up for everything. But one, we're getting out, we're increasing our pool, but we're also trying to go where we think the people are going to be. So we're not just staying in our normal circle of where are we, you know, people come to us. Additionally, we are starting to work with our student teachers. So some of our student teachers are starting to finish their semesters. And either they're applying, or we are reaching out to their mentor teachers to say, we know that you're finishing up, how did your student teachers do? So that then we can reach out to them to either invite them to apply to be substitute teachers for possible openings in the future, or do we have openings right now that they might then be able to fill for the spring semester? So again, the internal recruitment for the people who are here now, as well as going out and actually, so finding new candidates that may not have been in our purview before. So Oh, yes.
I can go into your next.
Yeah, so no, this was just a picture of a couple of the different job fairs. So we have some, they don't show our swag on there, you can't really see it. We've got some swag, we've got our administrators out talking, HR managers there. That's Melissa, I don't know how many of you have met her yet. But, so this is just us trying to get out and we've got some flyers to tell people how they can apply for different licenses if they're not licensed yet. So just really trying to support, even if they want to apply to be a TA, just trying to create some pipelines. Yes, Shuri.
Are you done?
I think that might be the, yes, because then we're going to go into staff.
So just wanted to, I guess, advocate for, do the engagement to really have a full plan because I feel like Oak Park in general does a lot of surveys. We do a lot of like, let's, let's ask you questions, but then there's never any like real follow-up. And to people of color, any like, any community that has been like, under-invested, like, that gets exhausting. Because you're not being compensated to bring up the trauma. And it's just, any trauma that you're facing or anything that you're going to, going through, that is traumatic to you, and then like, there's no resolution. And so I know Venus and I, we sat here, one of the BTOP meetings at the end of last year, we heard teachers explicitly say, I feel targeted, I don't feel comfortable, I, like, all these things. And then we did nothing with that. We also talked to staff over the summertime, came back with the report of like, all the things we heard. And so I can understand, like, as a teacher or staff member, if I feel like I already talked to like, three different people and nothing has happened, then that can be exhausting, and that's probably another contributing factor to why we're seeing these numbers decrease. So just like, letting them know, like, this is what's going to happen, this is the timeline, this is what you can expect. And also, like, this is what we can't do, right? So if you're going to say like, no, we, we're not going to be able to change overnight, then make that be known. And then also I think that, I, I get the idea of having that link in that space, but also this kind of personal, right? When you already have like, an issue with trust, like, sending something to like, a random link, there's, there's not that relationship to say like, I understand you've been going through a lot, like, let me have a conversation. I don't know what the answer is, but just keeping that in mind that if I've already experienced something, I'm not likely to go, especially people for some reason don't think human resources is very like, friendly. And we get the like thing, like, human resources doesn't work for you, they work for company. So just something to think about in your messaging and the approach.
Are you, can I ask, are you thinking of like, the Let's Talk? Are you thinking about the exit survey, or just in general?
In general.
Okay.
Yeah, just like, as you think about like, your engagement plans and like, talking to, to folks and asking them, like, why, you know, why aren't you, why are you leaving even?
Yeah, because like, I would just give the example, like, somebody was resigning and I actually called them and had a conversation with them, and then followed up with the information. And then they did complete the exit survey. So some of those pieces, it, it may be some of the dialogue that we have to engage, to engage them, to help them feel more comfortable to complete those things, so. So I do, so I do know what you're saying. Because I don't know if I just sent them the email, if they would have responded.
Yeah. And then the next point is just like, I think this is a great start in terms of the recruiting, but I think if we're, if we're like, really investing, it's one thing to invest like dollars, but it's another thing to invest like time. And some of these things are like, to me, low-hanging fruit. So if we are having the most trouble with Black and Brown teachers, to me, it makes sense to go to HBCU. If, if finance, you know, to fly, I know some of these things are maybe $200 and you add on flying and all that stuff. But I think it's worth the investment to go to schools that you know have a great teaching program or have a, and that could help you with that. But then like, secondly, you talk about Hispanic women. UIC is a Hispanic institution right down the street. So I think all these schools are great, but I think we also want to talk to teachers and student teachers who've been at that school and their experience and what they've heard about us. But I think also like, that Chicago State is a predominantly Black service.
An HBCU.
It's not an HBCU.
It's not?
It is not. Like, for the record, with a camera. Chicago State is not a Hispanic
I haven't talked about
It is not an HBCU, it's a predominantly Black service institution.
Yeah.
Let's get that straight. So, but having said that, there are many talented, amazing educators that come out of Chicago State. And so that is another thing that is right down the street, it's a nice little drive, but
Roosevelt, add Roosevelt.
So what?
Add Roosevelt to that as well, as in terms of diversity.
Yes, Roosevelt as well, so. But in particular, UIC is over 40% Hispanic serving. So I just, if we could be just like, a little bit more creative in those efforts, that would be great.
And I know you said those are the ones coming up, just keeping those schools in mind and seeking out when they might be having a job there.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. And again, these are just, as we've been building our team, these are just the ones that we've been able to tackle. And so that just, that's what we've done.
And it's interesting that you said that because one of our areas that we're lower on is multiracial. Despite having a pretty large multiracial population. I was just sitting here thinking like, I'm not sure you're going to be able to find a school that specifically can target, right? So I, I mean, from a creativity, from a creativity standpoint, like, thinking about how to, I mean, if, I mean, that's just, you know, that's, that's a area you want to increase. It's going to require more creative things than like, a school or a
And I think that's what's coming up. I'm looking to do all my recruiting now. And of course, I was like, you're at the University of Chicago, just do it there. And I'm like, I'm not going to get, I'm not going to get diversity there. So just feel like, yes, I'm going to do University of Chicago, but I'm also going to go to UIC and other schools that, you know. And I also shared an article a couple of months ago about how Black students perform so much better when their professor comes from an HBCU. So just, that would be keep in mind.
Yep. Appreciate it.
And this is to extend, or possibly reset, you can tell me, Shuri, Shuri's earlier point about the feedback loop. I think that extends through everything you've just talked about. I just want to be clear because, you know, when you're talking about engaging staff, identifying staff needs and addressing staff needs, if you take the time to gather that feedback and then you just kind of do some of the things off the list, but don't ever address all the parts and say, we did hear all of this. To Shuri's point of saying, you know, we can't do this stuff right now, we can't do this now. It's just, you have to, you have to show that you actually listen.
Yes. All right. And then our last, our last section is about staffing plans and timelines. And so again, this is the team that we anticipate at least being the initial start of our plan. We've already engaged We've already engaged, at least having conversations with all of these people in regard to what the timelines and the process that we hope to use. So just for educational purposes in regard to what the staffing plan is supposed to be, it's supposed to be a tool that helps with instructional administrative and support staff needed to design educational experiences for students. In regard to what we're looking for it to be next year, because that's really the biggest piece of this staffing plan. We do expect it to be relatively this, relatively similar barring any major shifts in enrollment levels. And so that's really the biggest part of moving forward for next year is where are those, where are those shifts going to be? What's that, are we looking at shifting here, shifting there? That's what we're going to, that's what we have to play out the next couple of months. And so that's what we're going to be working collaboratively with our teams to do. But we do expect for it to be relatively consistent. And so that, that's kind of the goal moving forward. When we're looking at the staffing plan, we do hope to, that our staffing plans provide support. And they focus on providing the ability to engage students, provide access to students, and then provide social emotional support and engaging them in positive learning environments. So as we move forward, I think it's important because one of the things that we were really talking about at the end of last year was what are all of the different groups that make up a staffing plan? Who are all of the different people we had talked about out of classroom positions? In, you know, the classroom teachers and then administrative staff. Like all of these people in all of these different categories make up all of the schools and how they run. And, you know, we even heard tonight, like, we think we need more of this staff and we think we need more of that staff. Or how do all of these people work together to help the school run? And so we wanted to make sure that we covered all of these. And so as we move forward, we'll talk about who's in all of the buildings and how do they help the buildings run? And so we wanted to make sure that those groups were identified in the staffing plan so that we're clear and transparent about who's in each building. So this is our anticipated timeline for this year. It is aggressive in, in regard to, we're hoping to get information out to staff earlier, but also the community earlier so that as we're moving forward, we're being as transparent as possible. We want people to have the information, we want to get you the information, but we also want to be able to work through the information and in a collaborative way. So we've already started the conversations with the principals and the district leadership team to review this timeline. We do, we will be having more conversations later this week and next week with principals in regard to what we believe enrollment is going to be, based upon current enrollment and changes that we've seen in trends. Then as we come back that week of January, we will be talking about specials based upon the gen ed sections. And we'll start to talk about any, what information we have related to special education and any adjustments that may be needed in out of classroom positions. We are looking to review information with fork because that is something that is generally occurs before we bring numbers and information to the board. And so we were, we hope that January 8th is, that's an anticipated fork meeting for us to bring anticipated or projections to fork. And so that then we can have a tentative plan for the January 14th meeting. So that then our goal would be to bring a finalized staffing plan to the board in February. With that being said, then between March and April, we would be working on finalizing schedules and assignments for our different groups. And then we would also be working on our teacher leadership polls as well as OPTAA assignments so that they can go out April May-ish.
How are we going to do it this early without enrollment being open yet for next year?
So, would you like to?
Sure. We estimate enrollment for most grades based on current enrollment and the preceding grade levels. So if there's 100, second graders, we're going to assume there's 100 third graders next year at that school. Obviously, the wild card is definitely kindergarten, a little bit first grade. And we use the Caserta Report to estimate kindergarten numbers. And then we use historical, not historical, current first, second, and third grade to estimate first grade numbers unless that number is larger than.
So but with enrollment going down kind of year over year, are we, do we discount for a certain percentage decrease?
I mean, so the estimates are based on just current enrollment, except for the kindergarten numbers, which we used the Caserta Report.
Okay, and then also on the fourth meeting, why are we limiting it to general education section instead of out of classroom positions also?
So we do anticipate, so that's probably a typo. We do anticipate to, anything that we're bringing to the January 14th meeting will be at that fourth meeting.
Okay.
And so we will have also special education, they'll be working through IUPs and those caseloads as well.
Remind me, what's the deadline for letting OPTAA teachers know the nervous assignment?
May.
May?
Yes.
Like I thought that's what it was, but just verifying.
Yes.
So I'm just anticipating like this information. How are we going to communicate this? Because I could totally see somebody walking away. So you remember those staffing changes, they're making them now. So how are we going to roll this out to the community? And what collaboration has been done with teachers to make sure that they understand so that they can communicate if families have questions? So that this doesn't spiral into, see, I told you, they were going to do this last year.
So again, that's why we were highlighting that we expect staffing to remain relatively consistent barring any changes in enrollment. So we're expecting staffing to remain relatively consistent.
I understand what you're saying to me. I'm just saying like, when we're making, anytime we're talking about staffing, so maybe this isn't a question for you, but anytime we're talking about staffing or anything like that, someone's going to see a snippet of this and it's going to be like something else. Something else is happening, they're hiding something. So is, has there been an opportunity to have like conversations or bring people to the table to say like, what questions do you have? Let me explain this to you so that you understand, like, everyone's not going to watch this for you.
Right, so we will be reviewing this timeline with all of the different union groups. So basically OPTA and OPTAA. We will review this timeline with them to identify this is when we anticipate moving forward. Just let, then they're on the watch to just know what's happening. We, because again, we are hoping to be as trans, as transparent as, as we possibly can and answer any questions that we can.
I would highly recommend some type of talking points or infographic, something that's, I can look at this real quick and say, oh, this is what they're doing. I think when we put stuff in the, the weekly update, it's very long. I think people are going to see staffing and.
Yeah, and I, and I will say that that's also part of why we've already started the conversation with the principals and the district leadership team to make sure that we're all on the same page so that there aren't as many questions, so that then people all feel like they're part of the process. So that then there aren't miscommunications and different, people feeling like they're getting different messages as well.
And when we say staffing's the same, is that a number? Or every position is, in every school is likely to be the same? Is there going to be a concern that someone's going to lose their individual student's reading specialist? Because there'll be a reallocation of resources where even though staffing's the same, is every person that's currently doing their job right now expected to be doing the same job next year?
That is, our goal is to be relatively the same next year. But again, we're, we're staffing based upon our enrollment. So we, we have to look at what the needs are, but that's why we're trying to be as collaborative as, and everybody at the table. So we're not trying to be like, we're going to make this decision over here and then bring it back to this person over here. So we're all going to be in a room together and having the conversations about who, what you have, where, and what do we need to be doing? So even in our last leadership meeting, it was, everybody's got these positions, how are we using them, how can we use them more consistently versus just not even having conversations?
And by the way, I don't mean to imply that it needs to stay the same. But if it doesn't, then explaining why it's changing.
Yeah.
I think what you're seeing also over time is building systems so that we're looking at projections to bring, and we're putting the projections up and here's what we found. So that was something that happened. We did do, you know, shared in a board meeting, here's what we're doing. But I think one of the things we learned, to your point, Shuri, that doesn't mean people got the message. So we're also sharing it here. Another thing that we're doing differently this year is we're sending out the board highlights. We have about 10,000 opens on that board highlights email. This will be included in there. And I think highlighting, you know, this information. So there's absolutely the effort. I think what you're saying is just to be as clear as possible. So let me just be clear, like, I've said this also when we've gone to PTO meetings, there's no like plan to bring back what we, you know, had proposed last spring. There isn't a plan to bring that forward. You know, I, and as I said in the remarks, I do think, and I would say, that we do need to look at resources over time, like, how are we using our resources? How are they lined up? Who are we being really deliberate about what students' experiences with the resources? But there are no plans for significant changes to positions in the manner that was brought forward last spring for the upcoming year.
Well, and also, I mean, I do think from a problem with resources point, there was a slide, I can't remember, it might have been on our, I don't know, I saw, there was a slide that talked about the increase in expenses per student in the district as enrollment has fallen because, and so whatever structure, like, I, I mean, I do think that if enrollment goes up, we're not going to get more revenue. They're moving into the same house that exists now, paying the same property tax. So if our cost per student has gone up because our enrollment has gone down, are we, and are we, and we're providing more resources to kids because we're able to do that, that's great. But if the enrollment goes up again, we're going to have to then spend less per student. So I do think when we think about these staffing decisions, we should be thinking about not just enrollment going down, but enrollment going up. And, and not always, I mean, and if enrollment does go down, whether that's an opportunity actually not to overstaff, but to, you know, be really sensitive to bringing our staffing to the level of the enrollment so that we continue to kind of stay with the budget.
Yeah, that, that's right. And I want to, that's why I mentioned that one of the things is to build actually the staffing model on actual numbers. What we were doing for a number of years was just turning over. That's why we had class sizes of eight and six or 11, you know, in the district. So there's a fiscal responsibility as well, as what, as you're saying. So it has, you know, I think you're one kind of putting those new systems in place and building a data-based model that's more fiscally responsible and data-responsive. Adding on now these systems and timelines and collaboration and communication. So we're headed in that direction where people know. And we want people to be part of also the tough decisions that we're going to need to make and be aware of them in terms of like using resources differently to get different outcomes.
And I think this year where you're not looking at the big shifts at this point, this is a good year to really identify clearly your communication channels and the circles, like what information's coming in and then what information's going out. So teachers, for example, what do they need to hear in terms of their position, in terms of understanding what's going on? And then who do they communicate with and what do they need to hear? And so all of those pieces and making sure it's identified what, when, and where, and who is getting messaging, just to be clear across the board.
I think that's, that's really important because it's, you know, we, we even last year communicated in some spaces, you know, and communicated to what we thought were key individuals. But that may not have gotten, you know, to the people or it didn't cascade in the way that we thought it would. And so I think your suggestion that to really understand the way the system actually works and the way communication actually works is really important. And especially important here in Oak Park. I think also any major changes, one of the things is how do we make sure that not only the teachers, first of all, the teachers and the impacted people or the impacted office staff or the impacted teacher assistants or the impacted administrator like knows what's happening? That's something that didn't happen last spring that was very difficult for the system is the people that were being impacted weren't notified in an appropriate way. And then I think the second thing is how do all of the other groups, like you're suggesting Nancy, you know, PTOs and, you know, going and making an active communication plan. I think those are the, some of the learnings. And like I've mentioned, we're making some of those moves. There, it's not a light switch, but over time, like creating, yeah, you know, like I said, the board highlights, we've gotten a positive feedback, like, thank you for this, this really helps that, I, I appreciate this, you know? And continuing to do everything better over time.
One idea for just dealing with staff vacancies is not necessarily filling them right away. And so that's a less painful way of reducing some of the staffing costs. Because we do have declining enrollment and we do have, you know, very small class sizes in some schools and some grades. And so I know we don't want to necessarily impact immediately the folks who are already in positions, but as people retire or leave for other reasons, we might want to consider not automatically filling those positions until we get a better sense of what we have. Because then it's not necessarily directly impacting folks. Obviously, class sizes might go up, but again, if we're looking at data, we should have a better sense of what that would actually look like.
Yeah, so this goes, that, I think what you're suggesting, John, then also goes to what you said, Holly, you know, in terms of like building that capacity in the system to be more responsive to where, what, what the data says in case enrollment does fill up, as opposed to having positions where we always have them, you know, in case enrollment goes up, the capacity to, to space those positions.
Well, because I do think like as the potential for shortages comes down the pipe, like to Natasha's earlier point about signing bonuses, like, I remember when I graduated, like there were signing bonuses, but mostly for certain states that were hard to staff. But I do think about if that's going to be, like, how we're going to remain competitive. And so if we're stretched already because, you know, we have, you know, lots of things going, like the cost per pupil is really, really high, like, that doesn't leave us to be very competitive in terms of attracting, you know, hard to staff positions. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of flux in terms of what this looks like and what the impacts are. And I do think we're going to have to be more creative. Because even I know like, one of our adjuncts is at Lydon Township. And I know they have like a signing bonus for students who actually graduated from their district. They get like a, I forget, it's like two or $4,000. It's pretty, it's not che, it's not like change. And so, you know, those are interesting things too. And we think about like who we're recruiting and what that means and things like that, so.
I was going to bring this up with the math because of one of the public comments, but I think this is applicable to everything, especially since we had the conversation about recruiting and retention and we talked about race. I think it's, I hate, I strongly, strongly, strongly dislike when people say we're losing something because those students. So I think when we talk about like why we're recruiting, why we're being intentional to make sure that we address the elephant in the room. We're not saying we're only going to look for Black teachers or only going to look for Hispanic teachers. We're saying that this is an area, we want to be reflective of our community. Like whatever the messaging is, I'm not a communications person, but that just really stuck with me when she said that one of the public comments was that you were getting rid of the math because of certain students. And I don't want that to be the narrative. I think most people don't believe that. But I can see that some people are going to say, you know, I think it happened at the high school when they got rid and people were like, oh, well, you know, yeah, tracking. Oh, well, you know, just bring those kids up. So just like making the implicit explicit. Because I was just like trying so hard over here. And so I just want to make sure that anything we're like changing and we talk about race, that we say like, this is why we're doing it and this is not why we're doing it.
For the record, teachers of color benefit on kids everywhere, like achievement goes up. So there is research on that.
I concur, but I just, I'm like, as my kid sits in an advanced class, I was like, if you had to take it away to make it better for everybody, like, take it away, like. But, yeah, just want to say that. But, yeah, just want to say that.
Likewise, I was going to save this comment, but since you've opened that door, I've also seen online, sorry, conversations about, you know, the district has given up excellence for equity. And I just want to be clear, you can't have one of those without the other. Like, if you say you have excellence, but you don't have equity, then you don't have excellence. And if you have equity, but you're not challenging kids and you're not giving them excellence, then you don't really have equity. So those two things have to go together. And, and I appreciate when that is recognized. And I think we have to hold firm on the fact that that is where we stand.
Well, and I would also like to point out that multiple people on this board have kids who are accelerated. So it's not something that's totally off our own personal experience, so. All right, we're getting off topic.
We're closing the door.
No more comments for you guys.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Community Guideads for Giving process update.
So we have Luis Strabrigas coming on up here.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Luis Strabrigas, and I will be giving you an update on the donations guideline document that we've been working diligently on since my return. Basically, what I'm going to share with you today is three things. The purpose of the document, a quick background and overview, as well as some of the salient points of the existing guideline document. And I wanted to share at the outset that this is a document that has lots of malleability. And what I mean by that, I'm going to share with you very briefly. So I want everyone that's listening and in the room, as well as the board, to understand what this document is and it is not. It is an administrative guideline. It is designed to align with and clarify existing policies, ensuring consistency and understanding across the district. This document is not a new policy. It's also a collaborative effort shaped by the diverse needs of the district and its interest holders, including donors, school administrators, central office staff, and now the board, sharing it with you, taking your input. This document was not created in a silo. There was lots of input, input from a lot of different people that got us to this point. And lastly, it's an evolving framework. It represents a thoughtfully considered starting point. And I want to emphasize that because the theme here tonight has been we are evolving. There are certain things that we're doing new for the first time, and we recognize the fact that as time goes on, this document's going to more likely than not have to improve to meet the needs of the district. It is not designed to be a stagnant document. Really quick, where we were as it relates to donations. And donations come from various sources. They can come from private third parties. But primarily in this district, we have PTOs that are one of our primary donating sources. So where we were, we had a decentralized donation practice. And Luis didn't just make this up. This is what he was able to gather from getting input from various interest holders. That means that primarily what was happening was in the schools. And then central office kind of might, might not have had a really good understanding of what that meant, how it aligned with policies or whatnot. There was timeliness of board-approved donations as an issue in the past. Sometimes there were matters that were floating out there for a while, and it's not necessarily sure I didn't yell before the board or whatnot. So this guideline is trying to address one of those issues from where we were previously. And also this document, or where we were, is that we didn't necessarily have context for board approvals. So there may have been instances that came before the board. We didn't have context or the full background on is the administration backing it up? What's the purpose of the donation, et cetera? So that's my understanding of where we were in gathering input. Where we are, we're creating the Guidelines for Giving document. We're in the process of creating it, and I think we've got a good starting point with respect to this document applying to those matters that come before the board for approval. And I'll explain that shortly. We're also still gathering input from interest holders. So far, input from the building principals, that's via not just an intake form to address Board Member Moore's point, but also like sit-down meetings, conversations on the phone, pulled into the legal lounge and saying, hey, Luis, you need to understand how this affects my building or whatnot. And then also implementation of review process. This is where we are. You will see shortly after my presentation, we're actually taking a first step at giving this guideline document and its tenants, which I'm going to talk a few about shortly, an opportunity to see what that looks like as it relates to a proposed donation that the board has to approve. So that's where we are. And where we're going briefly is we are seeking to enhance donation review. So we're also looking at the idea of, we recognize there are donations that need to come before the board because they passed the policy requirement threshold. There's a whole lot of donations that don't require that. And so what we're trying to look at is a process that enhances that. So it's not obstructionist, and I think that's the last two point, points on this slide. We're also look, so we're looking to enhance the donation review. We're looking to improve the board approval process. So making sure the presentation that comes before you, it's clear, it's succinct. We're not being overly Luis, that means over lever bows. We're just giving you what you need, and then you can ask the questions as it relates to the presentation. Also, these are the two points I was just referring to. We're looking to find the right balance. I think everyone recognizes the value of PTOs and donors that are trying to contribute to the district. So we don't want to put in place administrative guideline documents or barriers that are going to impede the desire for entities to donate to the district. And then this is kind of related to the last point, which is streamlining the PTO donation process. And we are in the works of doing that. And what, this part in particular is primarily for those PTO donations that are occurring at the schools. I'm learning that there might have been ongoing relationships with various PTOs, with various building principals. It looks a little bit different in different buildings. So we're trying to get a sense of that so that we can address it appropriately, again, in a non-obstructionist way. That's where we're going. So this is the first page of the document. It's been shared with all of you before, and I will read forward it so that you can all have a look at the actual administrative document. But the salient points, the high-level ideas from that document are, first, we have three key criteria for board-approved donations. And what this means is when an administrator comes before the board to explain, hey, this is why we would like the board to approve this donation, they're going to hit three things. They're going to answer for you if the gift or donation is inclusive and how it aligns with the equity policy. So some aspect of what the donation does to hit that. The next criteria that they will hit is, does the gift or donation align with school district-specific priorities that benefit students? And there's a number of those that have been already identified by the superintendents or things like early childhood sustainability. There's a myriad of them. And that will be shared with you by the administrator that's presenting. And then the third one will be, will the gift or donation impose additional costs on the district's budget, administrative, and staff time, or other limited district resources? So those are the three things that will be hit in the presentation when an admin is asking the board to approve. A little bit more specificity with respect to criteria one. The administrative team will explain to the board the inclusive aspect of the proposed donation to our district and how it contributes to ensuring equity policy maintenance. So an example would be a proposed donation that funds an extracurricular activity exploring diversity topics, promote civics, debates, open dialogue, understanding, et cetera. And such a proposed donation contributes to student development, access to exploring diversity topics, and is inclusive to the student, school-student body. That's just an example, but obviously each proposed donation might look a little bit different as to what's being shared about the donation that meets criteria one. Criteria two, again, this is school-specific priorities, so how does it, or district priorities? How does the proposed donation align with them? The district's administrative team will explain how the donation ties to a priority in the district, such as ensuring student access to art programs or providing similar play experiences for students in all school buildings. An example of this, again, a non-exhaustive example. The donation would help provide safe play spaces for students that contribute to development and socialization opportunities. Another would be the donation helps increase access to a district-wide initiative, like the district's theater program, let's just say. Again, just an example. And the priority there is providing more exposure to the arts. The third criteria would be how the additional costs, or how might there or might there not be additional costs associated with the donation? So the admin will explain to the board how the donation is not cost prohibitive or does not create additional expenditures for the district that outweigh the benefit of the donation. That's self-explanatory, but a quick example. Proposed donation that adds a play-based fixture to a school building that has a one-time installment cost, it's funded by the donation, and has limited to no additional impact on the operational upkeep of existing equipment on school grounds. Juxtapose that with a donation that's worth $10,000, and then a quarter of the expenditure to upkeep it is $100,000. That would be something that might rise to the level of, that seems cost prohibitive. And then to wrap up, the process that's delineated in the guideline document is we basically have a five-step donation approval process. Step one, and there's way more detail in the document, to answer, I think, Nancy, you brought this point up, like, it would be really good to know who does what. The guideline document actually does that with specificity at each level of these five steps. So the first step is the prospective donor contacts the district's administrative team. Most of the time, that's going to happen at the schools. PTO or some donor there reaches out to the principal, who will then reach out to a central office administrator. Other times, it might just be a proposed donor reaching out to one of the senior leaders in the room or a department head. So for example, you know, the special ed department or another sub-department that's upstairs in this building. So they, they contact the district administrative team. Step two, the administrative liaison does a primary assessment of the proposed donation through the lens of the three criteria just shared. I'm pausing there really quick because sometimes there are donors that want to donate. They don't know what, to what exactly. Or they just, they might be proposing a donation, and it just needs some steering. It's the, well, how could that best meet the needs of the district? That discussion would more likely than not happen at step two. And at any other point, even after we take input from the board, once a presentation is, from the board, once a presentation is made to the board. The third step is the liaison prepares a succinct memo with the recommendation to the superintendent designated about the proposed donation. Step four would be the superintendent designated prepares a form linking the memo and routes to the district leadership team, DLT, for review. And in one of the proposed donations that actually is going up for vote today, you'll see all those documents linked. Another one is a first-time reading, so you won't see that level of specificity, but if the board decides to move forward it with it, you will see it. And then the last step is that the proposed donation gets placed on the agenda for first reading and for a final vote. That's that two-vote cadence to allow for the board to ask questions or whatnot as it relates to the proposed donation. One of the ones that are before you today, I think the board already knew about, which is why it's up for vote today. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so I can see this for like large donations, but someone wants to give like $500 for the sandwiches, are they really going to have to do this whole big process?
So that's.
I know, but still, or it's like, I know, but that's my point. People are going to work her out, right? I mean, I appreciate all the work that went in, and we have to address donations. Like, I'm not saying that, but like food donations, you know, I mean, there's, there's so many things that are so, I just feel bad for the administrative team that has so much to do to be, it's $500, it's food, or whatever you want to say. There's just, I feel like there should be some discretion in this process that, because it feels very, it feels appropriate for the ones that we all, you know, you'll know when you see it, but it feels, I mean, even like talking about it. And the book looks like a book, like, it just feels like it might discourage people. Like, I don't want to give because I don't really want to deal with all this. And so I just, I don't know. I, I want you to keep going, but I, I, like, that looked so intense. That looked so intense. I was like, holy crap, I'm never donating anything to the school.
That's, I, that, um, the call we were on was really, really, really intense. I was not expecting that. And I know you had some follow-up conversations with folks. And actually, I saw someone on Thursday, and they were like, people are really upset. And so I.
I have got the same feedback too.
Yeah. So I remember talking to one of the moms, and they were like, we're gonna, I suggested, in the interest of time, it's always better to come with some type of suggestion as opposed to like a blank slate, and then you're like brainstorming together, as opposed to saying like, here are some, some thoughts that I had. And so I know they were developing some categories on what things would come before the board, what things, you know, they could spend on. So to the point, food, or if there's an emergency, you know, we've helped families who were experiencing hardships. I would not want to have to go through this whole, like, when you're experiencing hardship, you need money.
Right.
And I understand like the equity piece of it, but just like, we're in the holiday season, and we're doing a lot of like donations of volunteering, and I know those things are immediate. And so I do think to Holly's point, if there could be like a threshold, similar to like with the administration, certain things come to our attention if it's over, like, $25,000. Other than that, it's at your discretion. So I think.
And if we need to change our board policy, we should. Let's just change it.
So would you be okay if I just share a few thoughts?
Yes.
So as it relates to the, I guess, the interactions that you had on the call and whatnot, same thing. I experienced the same. And to be fair and transparent for everyone listening, there's nothing in this document that doesn't align with existing board policy. So when the, the statement is made about a threshold, the existing board policy, as it relates to a gift or a donation, is if the board has to approve it, it's above $500. That's just in the existing policy. So with this document, so then, and also earlier I shared, that for those smaller donations that don't rise to the level of approval, we're trying to get a grasp on how to best address those for all of the reasons you just stated, Holly. Yes?
Can I just, I think one of the things that came out of those discussions is that the policy threshold is too low. So there are things that fit into the bucket of routine, PTO donations, food, Teacher Appreciation Day, whatever, that could easily get over $500. My understanding and suggestion would be, as we're figuring out how to handle the routine, that that includes the routine that's over $500. I wouldn't want to come in and go to the PTO and say, okay, anything that you do that's routine now that's over $500 is now going through this process. Because they've told us that they actually don't, didn't go through our pre-existing process because it doesn't work with what they're doing.
Yeah.
So I think we, I think, assuming this is the intent, I think we should just be clear that until we figure that stuff out, it's, it's business as usual.
Yeah, that's this.
We're not going to place donations for the die.
That's this point here.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do in this bullet all the way to the right. Streamlining a PTO donate is in the works, particularly for those regular routine donations.
Including those over $500.
Yes, yes. And, and I am acknowledging that that is an area of opportunity for the district to address it so that it's streamlined, and all of the pushback that you talked about, Cherie, is addressed. And, and we're acknowledging that is in, we do have to focus on that a little right.
And I would just add, I think, I agree, like, we've, and we've talked about this. We want people to be enthusiastic about giving us money. We want people to feel like we're partners. We don't want people to feel like we're a hassle to give money to. And part of that is how do we deal with the routine? One of the other things that I think is underway is looking at different PTO budgets because you can imagine a situation where $500 donations, $1,000 donations, $2,000 donations, repeated 50 times in a school year, adds up to, okay, this actually does raise equity, even though each individual one may not sort of trigger equity concerns that in the collective they do. And so I think that figuring out, part of what we need to figure out is how do we contextualize, and I think you said this, specific donations because it's really hard to consider equity across donations if we're just looking at each individual token.
But I think there's a way to do that. So like collectively, if, you know, putting a, a, a cap one per year, right? So per ac, per, yeah, academic, per academic year, like, you can have, if you want to do 100 breakfasts, you can do that as long as at the end of the year, it doesn't total a billion dollars, just making stuff up. I think that gets to the point of it, because you're right, people will say, I do it at work. I'm like, I know that this is going to make the compensation team have to like weigh in on this. So instead of paying somebody $60,000, I pay them, I pay them $59,999.99 so that it doesn't fall under that purview. But then if I do that with every single person, eventually it adds up and it's, they see like, oh, it's over your budget. So what they do is they say, yeah, I know this person was under, but you have five people under total. That's, you, you went over your budget. So I think doing something like that, and then just like having that open, honest conversation to hear like their concerns.
Yeah.
And I know you've done that, but I think just continuing that dialogue and letting them know because I was not expected to walk into that, and I was just like, whoa, whoa, whoa. So I've been trying to say like, you know, we hear you, we want, we want to prioritize this. But I think what I, I guess I'm hoping won't happen is like what happens often is somebody gets a snippet of this, and then we start with. So I think just like the communication of like, this is where we are.
So Cherie, on that note, I would say that, that is a challenging aspect of this, but I'm also committed to the idea of having those condos with individuals so that they understand what's going on. And what I'm understanding here is two things. For those things that are going to come to the board moving forward, however that is, whatever amount, we'll use this criteria to share with you why the proposed donation is good. And then the next piece is figuring out that front-end aspect. And then the next piece is figuring out that front end aspect for those donations that might not always come. We're figuring out a way so that we have a streamlined process to address those, so that those contributions to the schools aren't looked at as we're trying to get in the way or hindering that. Would, would that be fair?
Or they come to the board in the aggregate, I think, you know?
Or they, okay.
If it's a category of donation, we give to, you know, this art supplies, we donate this, we donate that. Like making sure if we have one school that's donating two hundred bucks a year in art supplies and another is donating twenty thousand dollars a year, that that's.
No, that's fair. This is really good feedback and it's helpful, um.
Can I just, one additional thing that I think we've talked about is how do we encourage folks to make donations that are district wide in benefit? So it's not just each PTO thinking only about their school. Obviously, PTOs will think about their schools, but if we can, I think a big piece of the equity is gonna be thinking about shared priorities that our people are excited to fundraise for across schools.
Yeah, my, my thought on it, it's just a thought, uh, is that that's more of the continued culture conversations and participating. So that donations are thought of through that lens, cause typically they're not. They really are thought of as, you know, the group that, that works with the school, cause they're parents of children in the school, need to understand that.
I was just gonna say, yeah, if you don't have an affinity, no, I love Longfellow and Hatch, but, uh, I, I, as, I would give to all the schools if I could, but I could understand like people are gonna give to where their kids went or where they went.
And they've said.
Well, the communication also comes from their own school. I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna put yourself on the PTO email list of every school, so you're not gonna even like the, you're not a part of the conversation.
And if we, I think if, I think that's right, both of those things are right. I also think if, if we can work with PTOC to articulate district wide priorities that they could raise money for, whether it's field trips or theater or, you know, some, I think that something that both plays into their values and gets people excited, I think that's gonna be important, cause I don't think we have a mechanism right now for those conversations to happen. It is just school by school by school.
I think you're talking about a fundraising position.
Uh, I mean, honestly, I don't think it is. I think it could just happen through PTOC.
That's what I should be thinking.
Maybe.
So we, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, we've talked a few times in this meeting now, and then I know it's come up before about that five hundred dollar threshold, but I know it's in the policy. So we can't change that.
Or, or can change the policy as it's.
Yes, and I think spring is when we talk about policy changes.
Oh, we can change policy.
We change that a lot.
We change it in town, Leen and I could go and run policy committee, we can change it, what do you want me to do?
Typically do it, right. Um, I think we may need to just go ahead and do that.
I mean, I think.
I don't wanna thwart what you're trying to do, but I think that.
I think you're right.
Addresses some of the burden.
I would just wanna make sure it aligns to whatever comes out of this sort of routine process, so that we can change it in a way that they kind of function.
You can just make it blank, yeah.
I, I think that, I think we should change the threshold. But I also think we need a mechanism, and I think this is gonna be on the administrators with their PTOs. Hey, this is, this is what we did this year. This is how our fundraising went, these are the donations that we made, um, and, and that be a regular mechanism. I, in all of this, and having been on that side of things, I'm not sure we know if those, if those donations not fall under that five hundred dollars, I'm not certain we know about it. I know the school community knows about it.
Or we don't even know about some that fall above, is what we've learned, but they do have budgets.
Yes, um, well, I know, ideally, I mean, honestly, this has been drilled into PTO's heads about going to the board, so it's interesting that some happened.
So to be fair, for those watching, the intent really is, is it to instruct and it's to get it streaming, right?
Understood, understood, but my question is, I do think that there should be sort of an end of the year report that, hey, all ten PTOs, this is what we did, this is what we spent money on. Not to be labor intensive, but just so that we have an idea of what our schools are doing. And maybe it's, and, and that's the, that's the compromise perhaps, of increasing that, uh, threshold. So we're, we're not being so burdensome to you, but we, we do need to know what's going on in the schools.
Right.
Um, so because I, I agree, someone said, like, we need a little data to know what that number should be. At we, I mean, maybe there's a interim fix where we say something though, where we just add like a phrase, like anything over five hundred dollars gets run by the policy committee before, I mean, if you email Colin and I, we were back, we're doesn't need to see sandwiches, we're good. Or does it, like, do you know, can we put in the policy something before we have the data on the threshold?
Like a committee type of, yeah.
That reduces the need for full board approval and allows for.
I think we're already talking about not bringing that to us until he figures, has a proposal. Like that would be to me, the routine.
But my point in the interim, what do we do now, because our policy says.
No, but that is the now, right? I mean, we've been not following our policy.
Fine, but I'm telling, I'm just saying, like, so you're just saying, so this, this procedure is already bypassing the policy?
The current practice is bypassing the policy.
Right, which we're trying, but we, this is a proposal to stop doing that, so, but we don't wanna stop doing that, cause there also could take three months to approve sandwiches.
Right, but I think what I'm saying, and we could do, I don't have strong feelings about which way we do it. I think what we're saying, what Luis is saying tonight is, we're not gonna apply this process to the routine sandwiches, whatever, that's happening, regardless of the cost of it, until we have something to propose in terms of a process for reviewing those donations.
Is that what you're saying?
I didn't think so. If, 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 to full transparency, trying to get a grasp of the entire issue and its complexity, because it's multiple. There's the threshold piece, there's the small donations by PTOs, there's an approval process by outside parties that donate that contribute larger amounts. All of that falls under a gift to the district. So addressing all of that via the existing policy language, we need a starting point to say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. So for those that do come before the board, like so for example, the two that are coming today, we wanna hit these three things to explain to you, this is how the proposed donation does that. For the little ones, I'm trying to get a grasp of what that means, but meaning, how often do they occur? What dollar amount they are, some might be above five hundred, significantly larger number or under five hundred. So I literally am trying to figure that out and I'm acknowledging it here that we need to do that.
Right, and what in the, and in the interim, how is the approval gonna come, keep coming to the board now when you see them? Because now we realize we're not following our policy, are we trying to follow our policy going forward until, or are we gonna continue to not follow our policy?
Well, as the district's council, I always advise the board to follow its policy.
Right.
And the existing policy has a threshold, and if a proposed donation comes, I think the administrative team would be proposing that to the board to accept or deny.
So that's, right, that's the point.
Okay, we need to give very clear messaging to the PTOs that are listening to this. If you are saying anything over five hundred goes through this process, people are gonna be very unhappy with that. My understanding, please direct me if I'm wrong, of what we are saying tonight is that anything that is routine or regular that the PTOs are currently doing, whether it's above or below five hundred dollars, will not go through this process until we have figured out an appropriate, right-sized mechanism for those things to be reviewed. We are, put another way, we are not now saying to PTOCs, if your sandwiches cost five hundred and ten dollars, put them through the five-step process.
So my answer to that is no, because we don't know what that means, or at least I don't. In my discussion, I don't even know how many of those.
When you say, no, no, I'm wrong, or no, you agree?
No, you don't know what it means.
No, I don't know what, so when you're saying the donations that rise above, I don't know what kind of donations are being.
What I'm saying is, if, if tomorrow, if tomorrow a PTO wants to buy sandwiches and the sandwiches cost five hundred and ten dollars, are you saying they have to go through this process to buy the five hundred and ten dollars of sandwiches? Or are you saying that's a routine slash regular donation that we don't yet have a process for? And so until we have a process for it, go ahead and buy your sandwiches.
I am saying the latter, that we don't have a process for that.
And therefore, you do not have to go through this process, you can go ahead and buy your sandwiches.
Yes, and I would also like to share that I think that's part of the confusion and the angst.
I still think we're gonna get confusion about routine and regular.
I'm, well, I mean, we have to define those things. I'm just trying to make clear to folks, cause I think this is the fear that PTOs have, is they do all these things on a regular basis that can't go through a month-long approval process. And what they're gonna wanna know when they watch this is, do those things have to go through this process? And I just wanna make sure that for now, the clear answer is no.
Yes, we are trying, correct.
Just say, just no, yes.
No to you, yes, no, no.
And Luis, would it be.
No caveats, no.
No, yeah.
And what, would, would, would it be feasible, back to the categories idea, for them to come with some, some categories in terms of like what is, um, regular or normal business, whatever we're calling it? Um, and then we, we look at that, or you, you look at that, whoever looks at that to say, sandwiches, that's regular. Um.
Art supplies and low quantities.
Art supplies, that's regular. Um, hand sanitizer, fan days, those are regular things.
Face painter for the.
Right.
Outside vendors for fun pizzas.
I think you're right, I think, I think for now, we're not gonna, like, some of this has to happen now, cause donations are happening.
Yeah.
But I think you're right, we have to figure out those things going forward.
So can we like, just, and, and I'm on that committee, so maybe the next, and we don't have a scheduled next meeting, but maybe we say, um, can you submit before the end of the year, some general categories, right? Your most used categories, however they wanna come up with it. The next one, they share that with us, and then we say, that sounds reasonable. Or they're like, we wanna buy lipstick, oh, wait, that ain't, that's not, mm, take that off, no support for you, so.
So, so to that point, okay.
We're anti-lipstick.
To, to the point of lipstick.
Because other people that buy lipstick can support, they can also.
I guess, I guess my point with this is, I think we can come up with some top level things, like it is something that has happened annually for the last few years.
Or two.
It is something that does not require district cost to be added to it.
But my thing is to let them come up with that, because they know that.
It's a combination.
Yeah.
And while we're doing that, it's business as usual, cause that will take time.
Right.
And Luis, if you see something that you're like, oh, I don't know, there's like seven people that have, that have a pink.
Say it again, that is the last part.
And sixty thousand others in the community.
There's seven people right here, we have.
I, okay. Yeah, no, and we, I appreciate the, the discussion, the tussle or not, but I really am, as, picking this up again, really trying to understand the nature of the issue. And part of what you're sharing, those are all of the considerations that this document is trying to address, and we are not there yet as far as being completely done.
While we're moving along this giving continuum, I would, that board approved donations may reasonably take three months, it's not reasonable to me. So.
Oh, see.
Let's work on not, let's work on that.
Making it shorter?
Yes.
Okay, that's fair. Now, just.
I mean, in less.
But why?
And I'm not saying right now, I'm saying as we're building this plane, let's keep that in mind as a feature.
So goal, shorten the time.
Yes.
First class. And the more time you have, the more time we fill up, which means people are working really hard, like on, on something that, like that's what I, one of the reasons I worry about folks spending so much time on something that might not.
Yeah, we don't wanna have administrators spending, like reviewing five hundred donation requests every month.
But let, let us take the feedback that you've given and come back, I mean, it could be a tiered approach, I hear like three different things. I hear like, um, Dina, when you're talking about the report, there could be a preapproval at the beginning, like a blanket for these kinds of things, routine, staff appreciation, whatever it is, in the beginning of the year, share us with us what you're gonna do. At the end of the year, give us a report, so we know, just kind of for that fidelity of transparency and resource equity. Then maybe there are some things that fit in the middle, Holly, this is your idea, like they go to the policy committee for a quick email review. And then there are the things that have the big review, um, because they're significant and we need to wrestle with them, you know, something like that. So maybe, but we can think about like a tier.
There's a couple of words mentioned in the process, I don't think they need to be made bullet points or nice, right? Like, there's like a, isn't there a form?
The form's not helpful, well, it's.
Yeah. And Cherie, you, uh, what you're saying is engage the PTO, see when we meet with them, in that kind of what could that, what's in those different tiers and categories?
And I will say, um, that getting the PTO budgets, I think will be very revelatory in some ways, just, I've seen one and I was, and there's some like line items in it that are like, oh, like they're spending a lot of money on X or Y. Um, so I think that'll help us inform like this notion of tiers and categories and areas where there might be, um, more prominent equity concerns.
Okay, great, good.
And that's my report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Luis.
Yeah, thank you, thanks, thanks for your input.
All right, um, next we have the consent agenda, can I get a motion?
I move with board approved second. Thank you.
Ross Striven?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Sera?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bert Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Motion.
Excellent, uh, action item nine point one, non-union employee increases.
I move the Board of Education, District Ninety-seven, approve the non-union, non-administrator employee compensation as outlet in the memo dated December fourth, twenty twenty-four. One question, has that memo been published to the community? Yes, okay, great.
I have a second question, which is, it, the memo says that the increase is retroactive to the beginning of the school year.
Yes, it does.
Great.
It's actually the first sentence, it's the first sentence of the memo.
That addresses the public comment.
Below are the proposed retroactive, two thousand twenty-four to twenty-one.
I'm not sure how that was supposed to be. Anyone second?
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sera?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Ross Striven?
Yes.
Bert Johnson?
Yes.
Ross Striven.
All right, uh, action item nine point two, two thousand twenty-four tax levy.
I'm gonna read this motion, but I do want to, so I move that the Board of Education, District Ninety-seven, approve the tax certificate of tax levy and associated resolutions provided for the adoption of the twenty twenty-four tax levy. Second. I just wanna make one comment before we vote, and that is there were some questions that came up on social media and just wanna clarify a couple things. One of the questions was, why do we do this in December, when it's a really busy time for families? And to them, to people that may not have been paying attention since September, when we started talking about the budget, it felt like it came on kinda suddenly. So the levy is due to be filed with the state on the last Tuesday of December, the last Tuesday of December is December thirty-first. So we tried to file it on the last Tuesday that we're in the buildings, which means that we always approve this on the summer meeting in order to finally do that. We also have a conversation, it starts with the budget conversation in September, it proceeds with a levy presentation in November. And I think we talk about the levy three, possibly four sometimes, times in the budget between September and December. The other question that came up was, why, why are, is there a tax increase in this time, it's three point four percent? And, um, the, the, just reminding everyone of the PTO law, PTO law, that says that we can raise, um, the tax, the tax levy by CPI four or five percent, whichever is lower. Um, the reason that CPI is used is because it's industry standard and in the market that most collective bargaining agreements are structured with CPI aligned raises in order, for board staff kind of have an understanding of what a contract that might go out for two, three, four, five years, um, be able to project finances. Um, that's why this number tends to align with CPI. The other thing that happens, our budget is about seventy percent salary and benefits of our, our staff and are including all the staff, teachers, administrators and, um, OBTIA custodians, um, but also all the other things that make up the other thirty percent of the budget. Um, CPI is a number that's used to show how much inflation affects your average bills, that includes transportation, um, out of school placement for tuition, I mean, the electric bill, supplies, like all of the things um, that kind of go up on an annual basis by approximately that much. And so every year, when you look at it and see what CPI is, um, that is a way for us to maintain balance with.
Thank you so much, Holly. Ross Striven?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Sera?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bert Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Motion.
Right, action item nine point three, summer program access to algebra.
Um, I would like to propose that we hold off on this, because we got new information yesterday. Um, so in the interest of like having an opportunity to ask some additional questions and for everyone to have their own time to review all the new information that was presented, or that the, some of the questions that were asked, um, I would like to hold off. I propose we hold off.
So my only question is, from a funding perspective, can we hold off?
I, I, I do believe holding will interrupt our timeline for implementation, because. I, I, I do believe holding will interrupt our timeline for implementation because we are talking about a, a spring and summer implementation. So, if we were not to take action today, um, we, we won't make our timeline for communication and, and implementation.
Are there questions we could try to answer now that, that are still on your mind?
I just want to make sure that everyone's had time, because we got that, we got additional information at six o'clock yesterday. So I know there was, there was just a lot of questions and confusion and things that we wanted to clear up. So if, if everyone feels comfortable, but I know, so there were conversations yesterday, there, there were still questions and we were still discussing stuff, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that we have space for any additional conversations or questions.
Can I ask a question? So I have a couple of questions, but I think Emily or Kevne, someone probably can answer them. Um, to get to the point about this, but I do think that a lot of the questions that are being generated about our math curriculum generally, and so maybe, an alternative, because this is twenty thousand dollars, I'm not trying to minimize twenty thousand dollars, but from a funding perspective and the big picture, it might not be, I, I don't know, when we talk about the January fourteenth, um, agenda, perhaps one of the things that are on here, because this is a big, heavy agenda, maybe, you know, an overview of the math curriculum is appropriate for that because there's some confusion there, I'm just.
And just to clarify, this does not.
It doesn't.
Change the math curriculum.
It doesn't, but that doesn't mean that there isn't a whole bunch of questions about.
Yes, I agree. Yes. They got conflated, I just want to make sure people understand.
Right, and so because this doesn't affect it, and maybe some of us have some questions that are really isolated to this, maybe we can get through those questions and still get the twenty thousand approved for your, to the point of timing and funding, so it's not back till January fourteenth, but I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that our math curriculum has generated kind of some confusion and just people, yeah.
Yeah, so what, I think that's a, a, a great recommendation, we can bring forward on January fourteenth, um, you know, an overview of the math pathways and of our ma, you know, our, our approach to math, also how we're syncing with O P R F and responding to some of the data that they have been giving, that actually we need to make sure that students are standards-based ready, as, you know, as they advance in math, and so we'd be happy to, you know, address that question, uh, on the January agenda.
Because even, um, the comment tonight, and Holly, you were spot on, like, this is the trend, people are saying, like, I can't get into college, and so I don't want students walking away, um, who may have heard this while they were playing a video game and their parent was watching this, I don't want them to walk away saying, oh, I have to double accelerate, or this is not gonna be, I'm not gonna be able to do this. So I think just like, making this a little bit more clear and any communication, like, even if it's, um, I'm happy to go to schools, talk to P T Ls, talk to parents, whatever it is, but I do think the, the miscommunication is, I want this to be successful, I want people to feel good about this, I want teachers to feel good about this, and if there's so much confusion and people are like, I heard this, I think this, I, did you hear this, that they're gonna like, make kids start subtracting different, a whole different way? Um, we should be able to answer that question and be like, no, but at this point, I will honestly say, and I'm speaking for myself, if someone asks me a question, I'd be like, I'm not sure. So I want to feel confident as, um, a community member, a liaison, whatever you want to call it. Um, so I just want a little bit more clarification, so we can sort this all out.
We can do that and bring it forward on January fourteenth.
And to that point.
We ask some summer bridge questions.
Absolutely.
So can I finish up this little piece first, because I'll, um, so just as part of that making sure, and I think you mentioned this, but just what the full pathway is, because math is so impactful at the end of the road as well. So you can't just stop at the end of middle school, it does need to really carry through on what this impacts in high school. And math is just, already has a reputation for being hard when it should be lovely, so the more we can actually have people understand the process and not be stressed by the process of math and the flow.
And to that point, if we could also, this might require a lot of coordination in a month, but I'd be really curious how this stacks into how math is changing at two hundred, because like, it's weird because I have kids back to back, and they're gonna be in totally different math tracks because of where they start, I mean, also one kid's accelerating, the other one's not. Um, but even she's been asking like, can I accelerate before ninth grade, and I was like, I don't, I don't know. Like, I don't even know what you're supposed to be doing next year, because it's a different math curriculum. Um, and so like that level of continuity, because even for the kids who are gonna be accelerated or double accelerated next year, like, I don't know what that means for those kids, because like, the curriculum is changing, and so, um, yeah, that would be helpful, I think, for.
Yeah, that was my ask, that we, if we could have like, one of the math teachers from the high school, um, and maybe even one of the kids who were in the cohort to talk about their experience, um, that would be super helpful, because I think just, I've had the privilege to have someone explain it to me, but I'm still confused, I'm not gonna lie.
Double accelerations? Or, what do you mean?
Well, they were just like, this is what you need to do, and then here are your choices, so like, understanding like what my choices are as a result of this change, like, are my, is it still the same, what's happening at the high school, because there's a welcome to the high school event that Jung and I are not at tonight. Um, so I'm missing all that information. So it would be helpful to like, understand like what our choices are when we get to the high school, um, and what that impacts now, so if, if at all possible, I know that's a big ask and a little bit of time.
Yeah, I, I think it's important, and again, um, I, I think it's important that, and you said this, but we're not bringing forward any changes, our math curriculum is not due for a change for two more years. What we have changed in terms of integrated math is to sync up with O P R F, so that we have that continuity, because even in some of the language, it's like talking about ninth grade math, tenth grade math, that's not how we talk about math, it's actually talking about standards-based courses. And that's one thing that was different, before we were having a, a situation where students were like, just being advanced to a different course, but what was being missed in that was, were they ready as measured by the standards? So in addition to, it's important to get different perspectives, because we also got a, um, you know, feedback from a parent whose student wa, you know, did advance through math that way, that said, wow, if I would have known, it really damaged my student, because what it did was like, you're advanced, you're advanced, and actually then it damaged the student's understanding of themselves and their feeling of competence in math. So we want to be careful when we're talking about it, to make sure that we're talking about standards-based instruction, and we're making sure we're thinking about kids, students' motivation for math, as opposed to some of the language around accelerations, actually more about adult stuff sometimes, about wanting the kids to move through a course, and that's not how we think about it, and our colleagues at O P R F, we want to follow their lead, they're setting a bar around standards, and some of the feedback they've been giving us has been, you're sending us kids that aren't appropriately prepared for the courses that they're being assigned to.
But I think. So that was some of the feedback that I, I did receive, but I think like, sharing that so that parents watching this can have that to say, I was told that they, that some of these kids are not, they're missing like the foundation. But I think to your point even about the language, like, we're, I'm still saying, my son's a ninth grade math, because the language, this is the language that I have been, you know.
You know.
But.
What you give him.
Yeah, because it's like, he skipped, he skipped this grade, and then he tested into, you know, the next grade, so we, we think about these things in terms of like grades. So I never say like, my son, um, is taking algebra, I'm saying he's taking ninth grade math. Um, because I don't know what the choices are at the high school, it's been a hundred years since I was in high school, so I think just having someone here to say, these are the courses that are available at the high school, um, this is what you would take, you know, just very high level, but I think for a parent, like, I, I was like, so close to not coming tonight, because I was like, I need to know like, what's happening with my son when he goes into the high school next year. Um, so I know, I wrote somebody who's gonna be recording, for those people who are watching who did not attend tonight, there's gonna be a recording, but I think like, making that connection, I think to Nancy's point, making that connection is really critical, so that you don't have, um, students who are like, I, I have to do this, but they understand there is a pathway, if you just keep along your path that you're on now.
Yeah, I can read the couple of points that you sent us, just so that we're crystal clear.
Mm-hmm.
Access to algebra is an access pathway, not an acceleration pathway. I'm going to repeat that. Access to algebra is an access pathway, not an acceleration pathway. Every D ninety-seven student matriculating to D two hundred, regardless of math advancement, has the opportunity to be on track to take calculus at D two hundred before high school graduation. We are committed to providing high-quality, standards-based instruction to all students. We are committed to listening to feedback from all key stakeholders to continue to evolve our programs. We are committed to ensuring that all our students are properly prepared for high school and, yeah.
Um, the only thing I want to clarify, and we should just clarify, is. I, I know, but I'm not, I, I don't know if that's a hundred percent accurate without summer, summer school.
So if, if they have the opportunity, if they do the bridge program.
Right.
Yeah.
So if they don't, but to clarify on that, if, if you just, you know what, I'm doing what I'm doing, I don't want to do bridge, then you would have to take, um, high, summer school and high school, but as a district, you're offering that access.
We're still offering.
But it's, but that's important to them, that part is important.
That's important, not every kid can go to summer school. So it's important, if summer school's required to access it.
When you're in high school, just to be clear, on the high school side, not on, on.
Right.
Not on D ninety-seven.
But yes, those kind of clarifications are what it would be nice to see in the overview of what's going on.
Just, I said that because I wanted to try to calm some of the, um, families out there that might be upset or confused because of some previous information that was said. We're going to go into detail, as we said, for our January meeting, but I, I wanted to try to, um, reduce the misinformation that was out there, that's my.
I appreciate that, thank you Venus, and again, you can, we'll bring it in January, it wasn't here because we weren't changing any curriculum. If, you know, those are all questions relevant when you are actually making curriculum and course changes, that's not what's happening here.
Right.
And that's an important distinction, nevertheless, if there's a need to clarify information, let's do that.
Fair, can we ask a couple summer, is anyone else, I have just a few summer questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is anyone else? Want to go from there? I don't blame you.
Go, go ahead, actually, go ahead.
It's hot up here.
Go ahead, Holly.
Um, okay, so one of the things, and I, I didn't see a difference here, one of the parts of, yes.
She should go up there because the.
The mic won't be over.
Can't, oh, thanks. Sorry. On my way.
This is the same person that was back there, I was talking to. Um, okay, so one of the questions was, the original proposal talked about this taking place in school and SOAR.
Yes.
And one of the questions I had, I think that there are some kids that really depend on SOAR to get their work done, and to see their teachers and to drop off things, so, um, so a kid that might be really ready to accelerate in math, or not to add, access algebra through this program, but that could cause them not to be able to finish their other work. So then parents and that student feels kind of the anxiety of choosing between like, are my other grades gonna suffer? So can I do this, and I know that there was maybe some contemplation of maybe some other places to schedule it, maybe using advisory or academic conference, have you guys contemplated that and kind of figured out a way to get, let, let kids have both the opportunities to work on their homework and consult teachers and do makeup stuff and do math?
Mm-hmm. So I think, and I think that we can take this on, so nothing is changing right now for the middle school students, so it has always taken place during the day for SOAR, but I think that if families are feeling that stress, like, we want this to be available to everybody. Like, I encourage them to reach out to their school, the principal, you know, myself, and we can certainly plan for each student individually. Um, I think scheduling, like, to say that that's, that, that, that we're just gonna do that and move everybody around, I think would be a nightmare for the middle schools in general, but I think if families are concerned about missing this, you know, SOAR because of academic concerns, then yes, reach out, let's talk about it, let's problem solve, let's see how that works for your student.
Can you prepare people in middle schools to?
Of course.
Because they might not know, right?
Yes, of course, yes.
They might be like, sorry, it's only SOAR, right, like, just because they're not listening to.
Absolutely.
At eleven.
Yes, and each SOAR, each student feels different about SOAR and how they're approaching it, and they're, yes, and so we want to make sure in the same vein that some students have, um, an I U P and are receiving I U P minutes during that time, we don't let them not have access. So we do encourage people to reach out, because this is not a program that wants to eliminate access for anybody.
It's the, it's the opposite, and in that, having that conversation, we want to make sure that the parent and the student understand the impact and how important it is to be on this pathway to algebra by eighth grade or to integrated math one. And so we'd want to figure out how to meet those other needs and, and, and prioritize this if that's what the family's looking for.
Okay.
So can I segue off of that quickly, Holly, because it's related to your question?
Yes, I love it.
Um, just to clarify, this year, not next year, but this year, this twenty thousand, it is only third trimester SOAR, and it goes into summer still.
So, yeah, so this twenty thousand.
Just this one.
Is for this year, is primarily for our summer programming, to hire staff, and then it's to hire a coordinator that would oversee trimester three and summer. Because we're moving fifth grade, uh, uh, fifth grade, the bridge course from outside of school to inside of the school, we will no longer need staff outside of, um, to teach it after school, we will no longer need transportation, so we're decreasing the cost. But that twenty thousand is for a coordinator for trimester three and summer, and then just the summer teaching staff that we teach those three weeks of the summer.
Oh, we're still doing summer this.
Just this year, yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify.
This year.
Oh, I thought it was getting.
Next year is when it shifts.
Next year is when it shift, because it's shifting to trimester two and trimester three, and since trimester two started in November, we, but we couldn't, it was just, it was, we didn't have a turnaround to be able to do it this year. So we're moving, and we're doing it in a stage where we're moving fifth grade to during the day, this year to match their sixth and seventh grade peers, and then everyone will still do summer, and then next year, everyone, fifth through seventh grade, will move during trimester two and trimester three during the day. So there will be no after school or summer portion, so that we're increasing access across the board.
So if someone can't do the summer, do you still recommend them signing up to do trimester three so that they can get some of this?
You like to ask the hard questions, Holly. Um, what I recommend, that's really hard, because the requirement is that they have to pass the end of course exam within eighty percent or higher. And when they're missing summer, they are missing a significant portion of the curriculum. And so that is a decision that the family and the student needs to make, because they would have to take the test early, and they would be missing that instruction. So I, I don't know if I would blanketly say, yes, still sign up, but I also, we also have data that shows that kids that participate in the uh, bridge class really just end up faring better whether they pass or they don't pass. And so if we just want extra support, then yes, sign up, but if you're looking for the purpose to access algebra, to move on to the next level of math, it might be fairly difficult by missing three full weeks of instruction.
And so we're also eliminating the independent program, which I agree with, but can we provide some list of standards, some recommended materials to families who want to do it on their own? Um, I, my kid did the independent, I, so I, like, firsthand knowledge, it's like literally just the books, I agree with ending it. But do we have something that we can do, that we can pass on to a tutor or a family member that's a math teacher, or an older sibling that's really good at math, where they could still have this opportunity if they can't do the summer?
We don't currently, we are not currently set up to provide that information, I mean, we could certainly always provide the standards. Uh, and we can certainly provide the workbooks that we give the student, but that is what we did for independent study, and it was showing that it wasn't very effective. Um, so I don't know.
I would even ask for just any supports for the families, because this is, um, as someone who's a planner, like, not being able to tell my child like what to study, we tell kids to practice whatever you're doing. You're practicing Bravo, my daughter is in the mirror all darn day, practicing lines and singing. So the same, I think, would apply to math, like, you have to practice, and if you have like, oh, you're gonna practice algebra, but like, what part of algebra, what am I gonna be tested on? I think that it's so important, because it was just like, I'm grabbing for straws here, like, I went to the Illinois math website, whatever it was, printed out all those pages, was like, just do it all, and my son was like, in the summertime, and he has other things, and I was like, I don't care, just do all these worksheets, do all these sample problems. I don't think none of that stuff he did was so much as. So I think like, just being very like, um, intentional, if we're gonna set folks up for success, like, giving them the tools necessary.
Yes.
Well, and that was gonna be my next question, do we, and just to add it, so you don't answer it twice. You know, I, I, people have said that there are like, practice tests and like, like, a lot of, like, things to prepare, that the test doesn't really, like, the test is kind of surprising, content-wise, to kids. It doesn't align to actually what they are doing every day in the course. Has that changed at all? Are we giving practice tests so that kids know what they're seeing? I mean, every single, I, I just feel like the, the format isn't the same, and they're, we're teaching standard, we're teaching it of standards, and then they're getting tested and it doesn't line up to what they learned.
Um, I can assure you as somebody who has gone in depth with all of these materials, that we do have study guides that we use that are actually the same test questions with, like, different numbers. Like, so they are exposed to the format of the test through the study guide. Um, I, we can certainly make a commitment, so one of the commitments we're already making is to make, we do send progress monitoring, um, notes home to families, but we are going to make sure that they're more standards aligned, we are going to make sure that they're coming home on a more regular basis so that families do know what's happening in class. Uh, we're going to, one other commitment that we can make is to make sure that the materials go home. Teachers often say, you know, like, you can take this workbook home, we're done working out of this, and then it's really kind of up to students whether the workbook goes home or it sits in their locker, you know, uh, goes right into the recycling bin.
The workbooks don't have the answer keys, they're not very helpful.
They don't, but the kids that are going through the bridge class will have that work in there that they've worked on through with a teacher. And so their, their work should be in there and updated and correct. And they're also receiving the study guides, uh, they are going over those in class, so we are going to, I mean, we, we're going to continue to train our staff. Um, we are pushing for more, having more, um, of our math teachers. Um, we're working to try to encourage more of our math teachers from our math department to work over the summer. We do recognize and understand that there is a, there is a change from when students go from third trimester to summer because they're changing staff. They're changing, there is a break in consistency, there is sometimes a break in teaching styles, like, oh, I really like this teaching style and I'm struggling more with this teaching style. And that's kind of the, another push, I mean, the first push is access. That's another push to moving it into trimester two and trimester three for continuity and consistency throughout the entire program that they are learning from the same teacher, that parents know who to reach out to at the same time, so that we can kind of take some of this, of these issues that are coming up where families feel disconnected and to make them feel more connected.
And I'm just going to add in again, because you opened it up to the semester two and three P's, to please, next year when we're looking at that, don't just layer the math classes.
Mm-hmm.
Think about it as a whole continuity.
Yes.
With just more time.
Yes. Well, there will be a little bit, because they will be learning in their math class, I hear what you're saying, but in their, like, if they're a sixth grader, they'll be taking math six and they are learning math six standards. But the bridge class that they would be participating in would be math seven, so they will be learning seventh grade standards. So there will be some continuity, but there might also feel that sometimes that there is some layering because they're moving through that at a condensed and faster pace so that they can, um, get that information for that end of bridge. Um, but we will try our best to make sure that it doesn't feel very disjointed, but there might be some points where it, it does because they're learning different standards and skills.
Over time, and this might be asking too much for next year, recognize it. Um, considering it a joint math six, seven class that just gets expanded in those last two semesters with time, you would be able to have continuity of going through six and seven more rapidly. And this is, don't, we don't need to debate this right now, because that's, that's longer term and it's already 11 o'clock, we don't need to go into that.
Fair enough.
But, um, yeah.
Call for the vote.
Are we good with voting on this tonight, or, and then next meeting we'll do the more deeper dive into the pathways?
We're voting on courses.
Yeah. So then we need a motion.
We had a motion. And we seconded it.
We didn't say the motion, we didn't say this motion. We stopped, we paused.
But you can do it, you look ready.
I promise you, we said the motion and seconded it.
Why did we, and we?
Yeah.
Because it's been so long.
Yeah. Everybody repeat after me.
Venus is right.
Did we second it?
Yes, I seconded it, yeah.
All right. You get this one.
No, it's the call, it's the roll call.
I think we read the motion, it's been a while since.
Read the motion again, okay. I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District 97 moves to approve the access to algebra summer bridge program budget not to exceed $20,097.46 for school year 24.
Second.
Hard Johnson?
Yeah, yes.
That's her name.
Is Emmy?
We should make a correction, the motion should be S.
Oh.
Ross Driven?
Yes.
Yes, for S Y 25.
Burns?
Yes.
Spurlock?
Yes.
Moore?
Is Emmy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes. All right. Thanks Emily.
Thank you Emily.
Uh, next up for discussion and action, item 10.1 by elementary PTO donation.
Yes, give it out.
Patrick Robinson's coming up for this, uh, the board has a memo.
We just.
We don't.
I hope we need a discussion, we've had lots of.
Pepper stays till 11:05.
I believe it is all time, just for that.
I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District 97 moves to approve the buy-to-pto donation of $4,644.66 to install a Gaga pit and accessible swing seat at my elementary.
Ross Driven?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Spurlock?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Erchansy?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Motion.
Great, uh, so that takes us to discussion items, item 11.1, Black Excellence Education Donation.
So, uh, Ebony and Patrick can come up if there are questions.
I just.
I have a little, have you seen any materials?
I have.
Yeah.
There's a memo in the.
Yeah.
Oh.
Weekly.
We got the memo.
Patrick and, um, Ebony will speak to it and then we'll make sure that you have.
I'm sure it's there, I.
And we're just discussing.
Sweet, no way.
It's discussion and then action in January.
Yes.
We just wanted to talk through a donation request we received from an anonymous donor, the amount of $10,000. Um, and they have a vested interest in making sure that we, um, actualize our equity policy by thinking about innovative programming, um, for our district vocal core and our local student vocal core, local school vocal cohorts. Sorry, after 11 o'clock it starts to, my apologies. Um, so the goal here would be, um, for teachers to submit innovation proposals that are aligned to the portrait that take place during out-of-school time, um, that really think about high levels of student cognitive engagement, that maintain that family-school partnership, um, and also one that's flexible enough to respond to whatever that need might be, um, at the same time monitoring progress over time. So teachers would essentially submit proposals, um, in this vein, and the donation would be used to support that. And I'll turn it over to Patrick to talk through how it would actually fit, um, the criteria that we share with us.
So when we think about the first criteria, um, the proposal being inclusive, so one of the recommendations for a successful project proposal is outlined, um, that Ebony just got done talking about, is making sure that innovative programming that serves students both district-wide and local, meaning the school, um, will be based on an imperative outlined in our equity policy and is supported by our district data. Um, the second one, um, making sure that it supports the district or school priorities. Um, the donation will be utilized to support, um, students, um, that are, that at the district and at schools that have been identified in need of additional support, programs to address our students that are at most need, um, uplifting, um, that will uplift the student body as a whole. And then the third, um, meaning is there any additional, um, costs to the district? This budget, there will, this proposal, there will be no additional costs, um, to the district because everything will be covered within the donation being provided by the donator.
So I appreciate that you went to the criteria, but we don't have, what is, what is, we don't have any kind of backgrounds or applying criteria to something that we haven't seen, what is the, what are we applying it to?
So this we shared it.
Okay.
We sound right.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay, I just don't, I just.
Yeah, that doesn't, I, maybe it's me, but I can't, I can't click on anything.
Yeah, we didn't have access to it, because I think I tried to click on it earlier. We, or now we do, but.
Okay.
So essentially, it provides the ability for teachers to craft innovative programming that addresses, um, our district and school vocal cohorts, um, around an area that they've identified in the academic realm. Um, and then it meets all those hallmarks, and it is, and it is out-of-school programming.
It is out-of-school.
It's out-of-school programming.
And is it for one person, like, one scholarship sponsorship or multiple?
So it would be likely, um, so for example, say it was, it's an elementary school proposal. So it could be that a teacher proposes, designs curriculum, and perhaps from February, March, April, that is meant to support, again, academic achievement for the district and local school, vocal cohorts. Um, but then also providing entry from other, for all elementary schools, um, to somehow either virtually infection or to receive the content, but wanting to make sure that it's both innovative and inclusive, but focused on something that is identified by what our district data is telling us is a need, um, in the academic realm.
So is there a window, of, like, a proposal window?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So once it is approved, um, that gives us the ability to actually advertise it with our teachers, and we want them to come up with this kind of proposal, and we hope to within that month. Finalize and, and come up with, um, just approve a plan that they've kind of proposed, and then to start, um, can this bring?
Can this bring?
Yeah, there's going to be, um, a cap per application. Like, you could only apply for up to $3,000 to try to disperse the amounts, or, like, one person's going to get all 10,000, or?
I think it, it could be a combination of all of those, depending on what we think might be most impactful, um, and then also meets those, these criteria. So we don't want to look at a $10,000 proposal that requires us to then put on another 10 to make sure that it, so, um, it would just depend on kind of them hitting the hallmarks that they've outlined in kind of the proposal requirements, but also remaining true to, um, the donor requirements.
And how, and how is, are we, I mean, I guess I have negotiations on the brain. Are we using, like, $10,000 as, like, um, based on the amount of time it is? Uh, is that based on materials? If there, it's a one-time event for 200 kids, or is it a weekly event for two kids? So though, they could be any range of anything, there's no, on the, from a quantity, like, quantity, like, quantifiable slate.
Like threshold.
We're not giving rich, so we want maximum impact. So we don't want to see a class of two children, when we're talking about a vocal cohort that is probably more than that. So we'd be looking for something that it is at least obviously maintaining sort of a small group to make sure that it is impactful, but not a group of two students. Um, so we do want maximum impact for the dollar.
And I know this is, this is like a really negotiating question, does this go through the district and affect TRS and 6%? Or is it a gift that comes from the donor directly and doesn't go through us and affect their salary?
I think that's a great question, so, um, yeah.
So we, we can, but, but, let's get that answered, we did, I don't think we contemplated that.
And I don't, I don't know if it really matters, just as long as we don't miss that question.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
You thinking I'm not done?
I might not be done, Venus.
I think you might not be done.
Yeah. Um, so are we asking the teachers in their proposals for measurable outcomes?
Yes.
Anticipated outcomes?
And a plan to.
And then we'll evaluate and see if they met that, those, their goals and their criteria?
Yep. And that's built into this innovation proposal template, asking them to think about that. And I think finding that right beyond, like Ebony was referring to, like, not two students, but also sometimes offering some boutique experiences to a small group that, you know, all, it doesn't always have to be 30 either. High impact can be a, you know, whatever su, N number of students, you know? But like, a meaningful experience that's tailored to them. So I think that's the other thing about innovation, we want to be a little bit open to see what things people come up with, you know?
And I, I know that we want to avoid number three, but I wonder if, just so that you encourage a wide range of teachers from less seasoned to more experienced to want to participate, maybe it is worth it to say there will be a administrative mentor or administrative thought partner that can help walk you through that, even though that would be adding time to somebody that's a district resource, just, because where else it might, it might become less intimidating that way. Someone might be more willing to take it on if they know they have someone that will at least talk about it.
Oh, yeah, that would definitely temper them through the whole process, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm glad you raised that, like, what's, I think that's important, maybe we need to distinguish, what's talked about here is like, you know, if an administrator is going to spend a bunch of time doing soil sampling and getting codes for something, that's different than an administrator supporting in this way. I don't think that's what's being talked about in, in number three there.
What's the process for approval? So if I say, I want to do a skating class, um, like, how do you, how do you quantify, like, what's impactful? So to your point, like, you want to be creative, so I just found out Brooks has a double dutch or a jumper in class, um, or club. So to me, like, I was super excited, like, oh, this is awesome, but like, how would you define, like, this criteria meets this? Because people be trying stuff, and so, like, we don't want someone saying, like, we're going to have a cleanup club and this is going to help black kids, give me $3,000.
So I think clear is kind, so that's why we want to make sure that we kind of go through what we're looking for, where hallmarks of, of good proposal stand out for us. So again, making sure there's portion of the line that it addresses an academic, um, kind of need or strength. Um, and that we think about this idea of cognitive engagement, that we're designing things that kids are interested in, and really kind of not just meets behavioral engagement, but has some thinking about how to use these skills beyond just the space, um, takes place at school. Um, but then also has like this family partnership and communication component. Um, I think we were just referencing so that we're actually bringing folks in. And then, um, also designing for making sure that we're flexible and happy to deliver. So as we're thinking about, because even though this is not, this is a novel design, we still want to be able to be nimble enough to, if something isn't working, um, despite our best efforts, that we're able to pivot and then also think about how to progress monitor. So we want to be clear about what we're asking at the beginning, and so as you're receiving the proposals and evaluating them, um, that everyone is clear on what it is that we're looking for.
And also measurable outcomes too.
Yeah.
So you have to have measurable outcomes and not just something crazy that you're just putting in your proposal.
Yeah, because I can be, I, I can make up stuff a lot.
Yeah.
And then who, is there a committee or is there one single person who approves?
No, by committee, um, I, we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't want to just do it, um, in isolation. So we want to make sure that we get a number of different viewpoints looking at that proposal.
Could we also have them present their findings somewhere, whether it's at their school PB or, let's say someone takes all $10,000, like, they could come before the board, because I think that would be helpful to kind of share what people have come out with.
We, we actually thought about actually using this to kind of tell a story.
Yeah.
Around, like, doing something innovative and kind of like telling the story or kind of telling the journey along the way. And so using that as a way to kind of start something new. So if this is, if this innovative proposal works, this is something that we can kind of start throughout our district. Um, and so we actually thought about doing that exact same way.
And if there is a program of promise, like, how do we think about?
How do, how do we replicate?
Yeah.
And is this a one-time or do you get the sense it's an annual? Or it's just a one?
Okay. It, it's a one-time as far as we.
For now, for a point.
Right, okay.
It would be interesting, like, I was just looking at, uh, UIC's Institute for Raisin Policy or whatever IRPP is, and, um, public policy, and they actually have like a, they actually have kind of a similar program for social justice educators, I think. So, um, in all your free time, it would be nice if you could create a list of resources for teachers who are interested, uh, maybe not just math, but like other places where teachers can apply for funds for kind of this innovative kind of work. Um, I'm sure someone's made a resource list somewhere, um, so hopefully it won't be a ton of work for you, but it, it's kind of nice because I think sometimes, like, teachers often think like, I'll just go to Donors Choose, which is not really the most sustainable or, you know, um, and so it would be nice if there were options for teachers who don't do math or who don't make this cut, but they're interested in looking at other, uh, funding revenue sources.
Just ask community and teachers. Ask community and teachers that are already doing it, they might have, rather than want to do.
Google. Yeah, but I think there's also a certain level of prestige too, to have like a funding group tied to.
We have a lot of professors.
Uh-huh.
And this.
I'm not giving, I'm not giving any.
Do we have any more questions for Ebony and Patrick?
I'll argue with you later. I'll argue with you later.
Be very wary of any application from Sharie.
We don't have a motion.
We don't motion.
We'll have a motion then.
It's just a statement.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Patrick, I'm glad you had a reason to stay in this lane. All right, next up 11.2, SY20's Budget Authority.
Yep.
This, yeah, this is, Sheila, you can come up here, because you're here, I'm not trying to steal your thunder, but this is just the annual authority to start talking about budget.
I agree.
That's it.
I approve.
We're just discussing.
We're just discussing. Any questions?
No.
No.
All right.
The other thing I will add is to my point about the levy, it'll be nice to publish the date of our budget conversations are in here, so we can highlight them.
So yes.
So we can then tell people when they.
All right, 12.1, Board Remarks.
That's my board remark. I'd wait.
Good job. Any others?
I have one board remark. I think we need to be a little, and I, all of us, we had a really great and robust discussion about access to algebra at 11:05. Knowing that it was a hot button in the community, we should've moved it up earlier in the agenda and just made an amendment to the agenda.
That's it. And what would you have kicked out? Because actually I think we are having substantive conversation. But my point is, tonight we just had a really meaty agenda. I'm not sure there was any place to move it, because we were talking about diverse workforce, about giving, like, we just deserve less cognitive space.
Right.
Today was just a heavy one.
We got through everything on the agenda. Work coordination is your business.
I do think more people are watching about math than the other things in the agenda.
Venus cares more about algebra than workforce diversity.
I would not, I said, move, I said move the agenda. I did not say, um, take something off the agenda.
To the point, when we are considering where to put it on the agenda, the J, right?
We're at the 11 o'clock, we're at the time.
Only, my point in saying this is, since you all are all over me, when we have something, such a, when we have something that is a hot topic, we need to be considerate and talk about it a little bit earlier.
Fair enough.
And make an amendment.
And I would say, like, once the agenda goes out, if anybody sees something that feels like it's very too much, please let us know and we can.
Or the people that set the agenda can see that it was.
I mean, if we thought it was very too much, we would've moved it up already.
All right, I have one thing to say. So when we talk about like all the, from your superintendent comments, so thank you, I appreciate that, and I think it, I hope that people find it helpful to hear from you from that. But to that point about all the changes that we're making, I think it starts with like education and having a shared language about some of the terms that we use. So I think people often get equity like really confused.
With equal.
Yes, and I also think like the policy, so when the dad came today, I talked about that. So my daughter was also called the N-word a couple of weeks ago. And so I was like, what is the policy? Like what happens? And so I was able to get a really good like follow-up on like, you know, say explain to me what happened. But I do find it troubling with their inconsistency that this dad did not get follow-up. I did get follow-up. When I was talking to the staff member, they were like, they, he, and then they said the student's name, and my daughter had already told me the name. So like, like having a consistent policy so, or process, so that if, you know, it happens to someone else, I could say, oh, that was my experience too. But then also like that piece around the restorative piece of it. So my daughter did not have to apologize, and I would've raised all types of hell if she did. But she was like, you know, when they walked away, the little boy was like, don't you ever speak to me again? And he was like, I'm, I know how to get away with things, and he was saying all this stuff to her. And so I was like.
It was restored there.
Right, so it wasn't, it was like they sat there, they had the conversation. And you know, most times kids don't wanna be the, they don't wanna tell on their friends. She like begged me not to, and I was like, this is important because of these things, like this is a learning lesson. So we had the conversation. But I bring all that up to say that it's not just the like, don't say that word, apologize to her. Like, I think it has to be more than that, because let's just be honest, in middle school, that kid's gonna walk away and he's gonna call her all types of names, he's gonna tell her friends, and she's gonna be further ostracized. Luckily, I told her I would come up there, but.
Don't be that parent.
I will be that parent. But no, all jokes aside, I was, I was appreciative that I got the outreach. I think that every parent should have that. What I don't like though is that this kid walked away like this girl is a jerk, and he's gonna tell his friends, and then she's gonna face potentially further like stuff, and she's not gonna tell me. And that was very, really hard, because I was like, on the one hand, I could ignore this, but on the other hand, I want her to know that sometimes you're gonna have hard conversations, you're gonna have to like do hard things. So it was me like trying to teach her a lesson. So I would like to see something more than that like little 30-minute restorative conversation. And then also she was like really mad, she was like, they took me out of design and now they be behind. So like, just being more thoughtful about however.
Can I add to that? Can I add to that? I know that we're gonna, we have PD, but is there, I mean, one of the comments was like, how do you, I don't know, we're all, a lot of us, you have to do corporate training, right? There's all this corporate training. If you're sitting in a room and someone says something inappropriate, these are your choices. You can disrupt, you can distract, I don't know, there's like three of them or whatever. Do we have some kind of like, even a video resource or a pop-up that we can get to teachers kind of quickly?
Like bystanders?
For name-calling, like if someone uses a name, and I'm not talking jerk, a racial slur, a homophobic slur, a, any kind of ethic, I mean, these, if this happens in your classroom or you are in the presence of kids that start doing this, this is what you do, like totally prescriptive. We can have a conversation about it, we can explore it, we can have, I'll get to it. Right now, I think, I feel like, and I was, there was a coach that had, that my kid was on this team and it happened, and this coach didn't know what to do, and I called him, and I was like, listen, I think you might, I know you're not quite sure what to do. This is my, he's like, oh my God, thank you for telling me. Next day, he called a meeting, and he just did it. And we didn't have to have like, because he just needed someone to say, to give him some help. And I just feel like it's, if we can find, literally we probably could buy like a 15-minute, this is what you say when this kind of harassment or name-calling happens, so that teachers have something to immediately, because that's the important thing, right? Immediately address.
But I think that, that gets tricky, because there's also like a certain level of publicizing for the kid that's like, that's already been attacked. So like, I was a little uncomfortable with like, there should be a whole like educational moment. I'm like, no kid wants to be in an educational moment, like.
But no one knows if that kid's, so for me, also what I, I found troubling was that no one called me until I reached out. So when I asked my daughter, I said, what are the steps? She said, I tell a trusted adult. She told two trusted adults. So it's like, you do all that, you tell your kid what to do, and then I'm like, still nothing happened. So then I got involved, much to her, like she was really peeved about it. So, but I do think that had there been an assembly, no one would know that it was my daughter who was involved, but I think it's like, I'm not saying you should feel that shame, but sometimes you have to be uncomfortable. So if I said, you know, joke on like your shirt, then we have a conversation about bullying and talking about shirts, no one would know that I said something to you, but I will be like, I know I said something about her shirt. And also like letting parents know, we're gonna have this conversation. Like when something happens, a parent should know how to deal with that, because my daughter was holding that in for the whole time. It wasn't, I think I was on the phone with Venus telling her about something, and my daughter said, yes, I'm gonna be everywhere. I was like, wait, what? Venus, I'm coming back. So to know that she was going around with that was super hurtful. So I'm like, I should've been notified, so I could've dealt with it or not. But then also like other parents need to know like, these are the conversations, we're gonna have an assembly or whatever it is, so they can have.
We're gonna have the conversation in the, this happened in our classroom, and tomorrow we're gonna talk about it, because it's not acceptable. Some, just, I guess some tools is the point, and we can't wait for an institute day, and it doesn't have to be all day. It can be a shorter pop-up type of, like, let's figure out how to people, so that that doesn't happen.
I think like at the first level, there should be some sort of protocol in terms of like, this should be reported to like our, a name management or a title mine person. So we can track it, but then there should also be a protocol, like when this happens, you do X, Y, Z. And I think like in a situation with, like it's different in middle school, because the kids know what the words mean. Like with second graders, it gets a little dodgier, right? Like they know it's a hurtful word, they don't always know what it means, and they clearly heard it somewhere, right? And so I think like that, for me, I was thinking a lot about, we had this anti-racist curriculum, but like, we didn't really do a lot of that in the elementary schools. And that's where sometimes kids learn. Like, the first time I had to explain racial slurs to my kid, it wasn't because they had heard it, it's because like I knew it was gonna come up at some point, and I'm like, I can't believe I'm teaching my kid racial slurs. And I think, so I think there's something around that of like, what are things you might hear in the future that are hurtful and whatever. And so for parenting kids, and I mean, it always brings back to that conversation of like, when you ask white people like, when's the first time you thought about race? And sometimes people are like in their 40s, and they're like, never, right? And so sometimes, and so same thing for kids, we talk about race and equity a lot, but I don't think sometimes in the little bubble that we live in, kids are always aware of what that really means. And I've also been really surprised by how much casual races that my kids have encountered in the middle school. So like, kids pulling like slanty eyes, like that kind of stuff. Unfortunately, because like, we talk so much about race, like my kids will say something, they don't report it, and they aren't particularly like, they're angry, but they're not like particularly worried about it, because they're like, they're stupid, which maybe isn't the best, but, but also, I think like the other thing is that, I think the bystander training, because I'm like, how many kids were involved in this? And how many kids actually used the word, how many kids let that happen, right? And so I think the bystander training, I know they talk about this in SEL, but it's like such a weak curriculum sometimes, I think the way they talk about it. Because I'm a bully, according to my children, that's what they learn in SEL, I'm a bully. But I think like the bystander training stuff is really important, because like even my daughter, like we've talked a lot about fat shaming and body shaming, and so she'll call out like kids like, and she'll get like upset, because they're like, they don't take it seriously, and they know that, and they should know that's wrong. But like, she does say something, and like how many kids are seeing things, and they kind of know they should say something, but they don't have the skills, and they don't have the practice.
And if you can't say something, there's other ways to do it. You can always say, hey Venus, let's go play over here. Right? I mean, you don't have to actually take on race at seven years old. You can see someone that has been clearly hurt by something, and you can go and play with them somewhere else, and that's an okay way to be a good friend.
But I think to the, to the point, like we need to have a shared understanding of language, and like so do our kids, and also like, I'm just gonna call it out. I told my kids like, you know, you're gonna hear different types of kids use the N-word. Now, if you're, if your black friend is saying it, it's a whole different, there's a whole different cultural thing, just like with girls. I remember being at Emmer's Brooks, and we would always call each other the B-word, and it was like, hey, and it was like a term of endearment. And then I got to like my freshman year, my friend was like, can you not call me that? And I was like, we've been doing this, like what do you mean? So like, there are different cultural things, I don't know if white people do the same, but if, I do think like understanding that, you know, you're gonna hear this, and I always tell my friend, I always told my kids, if you were in a private space with your friends that are black, like, I don't want you using that word, but you have to understand like, that is a word you're gonna hear, you're gonna hear at a family reunion, you're gonna hear whatever. But when you go to school, you do not, that is not how you interact. So if you have a black kid saying, I don't care, it's in a rap song, you can say it, that's not acceptable, we need to have that conversation. So I know it's uncomfortable, because my kids are like, well, why can some people say it, some people can't? That's just what it is. You know, like my cousin was telling me the other day, like he, he's, he's gay, he's like, I call, you know, my friends that, but if a straight person were to say that, and I was kind of like, I get it. So understanding those norms, but I just bring all this up to say, I think people will use like, oh, I have allergies, that is an equity issue, that is not. I've seen how difficult has changed since when my son started school to what it is now, to being very explicit about these conversations. The fact that like, so many parents are coming up talking about their kids' experience, like I think this is something we need to like really focus on. I think like saying all that thing, all the things you said were great, but like, parents wanna feel like something's actually happening.
I hear you, here's what I hear, and here's what I owe you a response on. Number one, what are we doing proactively to build that shared language and send the message that this is the expectations here, you know? And addressing explicitly like what our values are and what things are off limits to say and why. And the bystander piece, what do you do if you hear it? Walk away, just some strategies, teaching that. I think the other thing we hear, I hear you saying is, when something happens, what's a protocol? So we just have an agreed upon response piece? And then after that also, how are we communicating to families? So what's our shared understanding? If we hear something, here's what we're gonna send out, and here's some resources we'll send with, to families. So thinking about what those tools are and those responses. And then I think the other thing I really want us to think about is, when you described Sharie that conversation, it's actually not a restorative conversation just because they sat down together. There's a whole depth of work. Thinking about when you're being pulled to have this conversation is part of planning for a restorative conversation, because that means I'm not ready, it's not the right time for me, and it has to be the right time. Also the prep work around reflection individually before we sit down, and some agreements that I want to have this conversation, and, and you know, facilitating that in a much different way, it is not a restore, what you described. If somebody's walking away making faces, that means we didn't do it right, and we don't fundamentally understand restorative.
To be fair, they asked her, but I think she felt like she had to, because I told her like, you, you need to like have this conversation. So they did ask her, but I think even to that point, like there's a power dynamic of a teacher saying, do you wanna do this? And you're asking these questions. So I think like age-appropriate restorative justice. Because if you ask me and I'm like mad, I'd be like, no. But I don't, I don't know if I would've had that agency at 11 to say, I'm not ready to have this conversation, and I wasn't there to be her advocate. And then the last piece I do, I do just wanna call out, because we talked a little bit about this today, like teachers, like the things that our black and brown teachers are experiencing in the schools, we don't talk about that enough. We have heard explicitly, like people talk about being retaliated against, being targeted, and the treatment that they are experiencing at the schools. And I think we don't have that conversation enough. And so if we're gonna talk about like retention, people have to feel safe to come and be at work, and not feel like you're gonna say a joke and then someone's gonna like go tell the principal on you. So I think as we talk about this, these processes and procedures, like what do you do when you feel like you can't speak your mind, or someone is like dismissive of your ideas? Like all the things we heard in that V top meeting, like I walked away, like I understand, I've had that same experience. And so to know that like we're sitting on this board, and we heard that, and we haven't done anything is, is just a huge misstep.
So I think we can, and I know we're at time, but I'd like to talk about, we haven't done anything, and maybe we can address that at a different time. So I think naming that space and then actually working together to make some changes substantively is what our focus is, not to say that there aren't other things we need to do, but I'd like to revisit that and talk about what we did do, and maybe also what we should do more.
And I just add one thing to your list of your undernotes, and that was just making sure our teachers and our school communities are prepared to kind of teach about how you respond when you witness or are part of, or you're the adult and they're the kids, and some of these words are used. And then on the restorative practices, to your point, we heard a little bit about, kind of, I don't know, it almost sounds like everyone thinks everyone has to apologize, like it's not restorative. And sometimes it's just one way. Sometimes only one person apologizes, because only one person messed up, and the other person doesn't have to say, I'm sorry. Because what are they saying, I'm sorry, I am what I am?
It's missing the phrase.
Restorative does not mean mutual apology.
No, it's just, it.
To piggyback on what Holly said, and I was going to say that, there may be some misunderstanding about what restorative means, because the victim should not be apologizing to the perpetrator. Um, and I don't, I've now heard about three examples of that, so there is something going on.
Well, and if the perpetrator is not sorry, don't very force them to like a weakened apology, that's not the point either.
I don't know what that is, but I wanna make sure, but I wanna make sure of that point that, that the person who is the victim is restored as much as possible and their trauma is addressed and reduced as much as possible. Additionally, when parents get involved and this has happened in their situations of bullying and name calling and these other situations, they do wanna know what has happened to that child. That is not appropriate, we cannot share that information and I understand that. But I think we can say we have taken, I think they're not getting anything. I think we need to say we are taking.
Do you mean the consequences when you say they're not getting anything?
Meaning the parents, we're not going to share with another family what has happened with that student.
But if we're clear on the process, they would already know, it's, it's transparent. This person, we called their parent, we had a conversation with their parent, they were told that this is inappropriate behavior, period.
Or just we followed procedure, there is a, there will be consequences in, in place without going in any detail to protect ourselves, whatever we have to say. But I think that we build resentment when we just say, oh, I can't tell you.
Yeah, and I don't think we, we don't do that, you know, but we do, we, in, in different situations, we have communicated, but it may not be the level of detail that um, someone is seeking. And I think to your point, Venus, we, that's something we just have to, you know, but we can offer resources and say, here's what you can do, here's the next step. I will say that um, we are often faced with that where we just have to say, that is, you know, it's unsatisfactory because you want to know more, but to your point.
But I'm also, this is where having some policies and procedures on what happens here that are generic to the situation.
Yeah.
That can be shared.
Okay.
Yeah, and as far as the kind of not apology, apology or whatever, if the person who is supposed to be apologizing clearly doesn't get it, and also that's, that's like, that's their issue, it doesn't even have to be dealt with in front of the other student. The other student can get support from the adult if the child's already. And then that child though needs some follow, right? Like, you can't just let, they're just walking away and, I mean, there's, there's clearly still more for them to work out, possibly just individually with the social worker, with the student success coach, with whatever else. But there is, that, that issue doesn't also have to be done in front of the other student. Perhaps it can be done away and then later, the apology is more sincere and you can come back to it and say, you know, are you ready now? And then you have a better understanding. I think there's a pretty big assumption even with twelve and thirteen year olds to assume that they can process what they said, why it hurt, why it was inappropriate and why they're in trouble and why they shouldn't do that and, and like all of their feelings around it. So I, I think we should give kids that space too.
And also follow up with the parents as well, just on behalf of the child, like in the child centered way, we're all working this issue. So to just quickly email the parents and then you're done, um, just make space for them to come back with it.
This also makes me wonder how many, like how much diverse, diversity do we have with our social workers? Like I don't know, and so even like their level of like sensitivity and awareness with racial and cultural differences and kind of deal with some of this stuff. Because I think, again, I think kids can be re-traumatized sometimes when like these incidents are handled badly.
Well, it also begs the question of whether social workers are being engaged when this happens.
Yeah, that, in my case, it was not. And I think, my daughter's gonna be okay, but I'm just thinking like, if she, had she not told me and this kid like continued to call her this.
Well, if you weren't who you were too.
Yeah, well, yeah, and he called her this on multiple occasions. So it was, so I just think like having that sensitivity. And then I do know like, white teachers have told me like, I'm uncomfortable, like I don't wanna make a mistake, I don't wanna do something wrong. And black teachers and other teachers of color, we don't have that, uh, we don't have that privilege. We have to deal with it, like hearing from black teachers to say like, I have to take on all these additional things in addition to my normal job, like that's common, I do it at work all the time. So I think we have to like push a little bit and say, yes, this might be hard. You might say something wrong, but we're counting on you as the adult in the room to say like, this isn't right and, and do what you think is right. Don't sit there and say, I don't wanna say the wrong thing, that I'm accused of being racist, like. I'll move to adjourn.
We have more stuff.
Word reports.
We can go. Great, back we got in the room.
Back on some standard.
See, I can do two sentences.
Do we have any P T A C?
We're almost, we're almost there.
Awesome.
Three sentences.
Four, was there anything?
We're, January eighth is on the schedule.
Okay, I go?
No.
P T O C, we touched on a little bit, and the context of donations, anything else?
No, meetings have been scheduled for the, for the new year.
C E C?
Try board was changed into a regular meeting because we did not have quorum for a couple of the groups. Um, they are on budget, they're actually under budget, but they anticipate more costs towards the end of the year, but so they are good with budget. Um, there's a lovely presentation on the basics themes, um, which I will not go into right now, but there's some lovely slides you can look at on it and I'm happy to answer questions. And the last piece on this is that we will be adding questions to our registration for kindergarteners to look at um, access and equity issues related to preschool PK programs. Um, two quick questions for folks that folks here have been working with C E C on, and that's my report.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, please.
You know, when we formed for C E C, it predates me, it predates all of us, it's, I think it had its twenty five year, uh, we had this tri board because we needed this oversight. But now that it's embedded institutionally in our culture, I just wonder if there's a better way to showcase them.
We are having a governance conversation, we decided not to do it this time because we didn't have quorum for everybody, but that will be happening.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's a different thing, maybe it's invite the community, maybe it's a town hall like thing, maybe it's just something else where we don't have to have quorum, but the boards are encouraged to come.
What?
Stop talking.
Stop talking.
Stop talking. Hey, I cannot really just say that.
I will, I will hold the board.
Okay, O P E A.
Um, we are meeting on eighteen.
Great. O P R F C C?
Nope.
No, thank you, Evred.
Uh, they confirmed their initiatives for the twenty four, twenty five school years. So one is trying to maintain the exemption for school districts in the um, paid leave ordinance. Uh, they're working on dual credit quality act and then they're still desperately trying to work on deprioritizing schools, uh, schools as public places, so.
Alright, agenda review, one thing I'll note is just the request around the math presentation that we talked about as an addition. I don't know if that means that we're gonna.
Yeah, we can shift some things.
Be to like another six hour meeting, but.
We covered a lot in workforce diversity, I don't know if there, any of that was, do you think it is?
No, it's kind of the next phase of it, so we'll make some changes because it would be too much, so we'll bring that forward if you.
Anything else on the agenda or that's not on the agenda, folks? Anybody wanna go back into closed session? Alright, uh, how about.